All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It is the monthly work session of the Athens Clark County Mayor's Commission here on Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And we just have four items this evening. A relatively light month. I'm happy to report. I know a couple of our colleagues won't be able to join us. But I am going to go ahead and ask Manager Williams to introduce HR staff who are going to talk about fiscal year twenty-two compensation benefits and wellness, which is something that we always discuss ahead of the budget preparation.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is our annual compensation benefits and wellness presentation. Tracy Mason, our benefits and wellness administrator, will take the lead, but we have a host of our consultants on the line that I'll ask her to introduce, who will assist and provide segments of the presentation. Tracy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Mayor's Commission, for having me on tonight to discuss our budget requests. From our consulting firm of Epic Brokers, we have Carrie Arnold, Stephen McKenzie, and I believe Irv Morris are all on the line as well to assist with any questions that you may have. But with that, I'll just jump right into the presentation. I believe you've all already received it, but I am going to pull it up on the screen so that we can go through it together. Let me get this pulled up. There we are.
We've got it.
All right. Let me start the slideshow. All right. So everyone can see that? Can everyone see my screen? Guess it looks kind of weird on my double screen.
Yes, we can see it.
All right. Perfect. So again, we are going to talk about our active employee and retiree benefits budget for FY twenty-two. One thing I want to remind you to keep in mind when we get talk about rate increases, our plan year now operates on a calendar year cycle of January to December. So any rate increases that we discuss will actually go into effect January one of two thousand and twenty-two. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. So we will talk a little bit about calendar year budgets versus fiscal year budgets as we move through this. So the purpose of the presentation is to provide you an update on the FY twenty-one employee and retiree benefits budgets and provide cost projections for the next fiscal year of FY twenty-two. We'll go through utilization trends, our recent claim activity, updated projections for both FY twenty-one and twenty-two, and the proposed two thousand and twenty-two health insurance rates. We'll also talk a little bit about pension contributions and then some cost containment solutions that we have been researching. There is a lot of information on these slides, and I'm not going to go through all the specific data points. I'll hit the high points, but if you do have any questions, please don't hesitate to stop me. So with the utilization trends, again, this is a very busy slide, but I'll just draw your attention to the area circled in red. When we're looking at our trends and we are looking at cost projections, we use a rolling twelve-month cycle. So basically what that means is, in the projections that you're seeing, we're looking at this data captured through January of two thousand and twenty-one. So we're going from January two thousand and twenty-one backwards twelve months. So that's our current period. And then the prior year period is the prior full calendar year. So just to kind of give you some context there. So our current trend, when you see PM, PM, that refers to per member per month. So if you take our costs and divide those across all members in our group, that's going to include employees, spouses, dependents, that's all covered lives. Our trend is running about four point six percent higher than the prior year when you're looking at total medical costs. But if you look at it purely an employee per member month, we're trending at about three point four percent. Now, I do want to caution you, those numbers are, they sound good, and they are. However, these numbers do not capture our February and March claims. There's typically a claims lag between when the claims are incurred and when they are paid by Blue Cross and then subsequently reported to Epic. So there is a significant time lag in there. However, in my office, we receive the weekly invoices from Blue Cross. So we see the invoices come across in real time and can see those dollar amounts. And I will tell you that February and March claims ran considerably higher than normal. So once that data gets folded into here, those trend numbers are probably going to increase. So just wanted you to know that moving forward. If you look over to the right, you'll see these boxes for under high-cost claimants. Our high-cost claimants for July one to December thirtieth or thirty-first of two thousand and twenty, our high-cost benchmark was one hundred and seventy-five thousand. So any claims over one hundred and seventy-five thousand is when our stop-loss insurance would kick in. As of January first, that's increased to two hundred thousand. But looking at this from a fiscal year or rolling twelve-month standpoint, our high-cost claims have gone up a good bit. On a per member per month, we're running at about eight point two percent trend. When you look at it on a per employee per month, we're at six point nine percent. And again, just want to say this has captured most of the high-cost claims that we have right now. I do anticipate a couple of more. We'll talk about it a little bit more a few slides later, but we are seeing more high-cost claimants this year than we did in the previous year, and that is part of what's driving our costs. When you look at utilizations, our acute admissions are down a little bit from the prior year. But again, this is going to go up once we get the February and March data because we do have some COVID claims that are hitting. The days in the hospital have increased slightly, and that is due to COVID. And then you can see that our costs per admissions have increased, and we'll see that increase more again with COVID, which will go into a bit more in a moment. Just some more on our utilization trends. Again, you can see the inpatient paid amount, the ER paid amount. All those costs have increased over the prior year. And again, the story here that you're going to hear through this presentation is going to be COVID, and it is going to be those high-cost claims. Those are the two things that are driving these increases that you see. We have been getting up-to-date information from Anthem Blue Cross related specifically to our COVID claims. But as with all of our claims, this COVID number is a moving target. Again, because this is a constantly changing situation, again, we have the lag between when the claims are paid and when the data comes through. So this slide is already out of date. I believe this was through toward the end of March. And at that point, our total COVID claim costs were nine hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. I received an updated report just this afternoon from Anthem Blue Cross. Our total claimants have gone from the one thousand two hundred and fifty-four that you see in the slide before you, that has increased to one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine claimants. And again, that is across all members. That's not just employees. That's retirees, dependents, and spouses. The per member per month cost has increased from the twenty-six fifty-three you see to forty-one eighty. And our total costs have increased to one point seven million, and that's just been a matter of the last not quite a month. But again, this is capturing a lot of the data that we had not captured before. We've had three hundred and four-
This is Jeff. Can I add something?
Absolutely.
So those claim numbers, if I'm not mistaken, that's anything from a test to a hospitalization, anything in between?
Correct.
So those numbers are not indicative necessarily of some high case count among our employees, keeping in mind that, you know, membership includes family members. So I just wanted to point that out. And that, you know, the cost being driven by less the volume than probably the high-cost claimants. Is that right?
That's correct. Thank you. Yes, this does include testing, treatment, hospitalizations. So that is across the board. But if you want to break that down a bit further, again, of the three hundred and forty confirmed cases, there have been twenty-six hospital admissions at a cost of approximately fifty-four thousand dollars per hospital admission. So when the cases are severe, they are hospitalized, and those costs are definitely extreme. So that's where we are. Again, this is a continuously developing situation. While we do believe the COVID numbers are starting to increase, I'm sorry, starting to decrease, the claims costs are increasing simply because they're starting to hit the claim system. So I don't want there to be an alarm that the sudden spike in these claim costs over the last month indicate a spike in claims. That's not the case. These could be claims from a month ago that are just now hitting the system. So while these numbers are bleak, seeing the current invoices as they come in, we do believe that our cases are starting to taper off, and we hope to start seeing a decline very soon.
Tracy, we also experienced during the shutdown, maybe not a corresponding decrease, but some decrease or offset in care that happened. And some of that is also coming due in terms of deferred care.
Yes. Yes, we did not. We didn't experience quite the decrease that we had anticipated. It seems that a lot of people still went on and had procedures. But you're right, there were a lot of procedures that were delayed and that are just now hitting. So that's a part of that storm as well. So we have several waves to this storm that are hitting. With this chart, I kind of want to draw your attention to these boxes here. When we're looking at the two thousand and twenty plan year, so this is going to be calendar year two thousand and twenty. So for our first quarter, that's going to be, you know, January through March. We were running just under five hundred dollars, had a little dip in the second quarter. But then you can see it shoots up pretty significantly in the third quarter. This is when the COVID claims started to hit. And they kind of tapered down a little, but then you see the spike again in two thousand and twenty-one. Keep in mind, this five ninety-three seventy-four, that was mainly just for January of two thousand and twenty-one. This is not captured February and March yet. So again, we're going to see that number increase. As of this data, which again was through January, we were running at about eighty-nine percent of budget. Now that we've gotten the February data in and some of March, we're actually running at about a hundred and one percent of budget. So it does look like we will go over budget slightly this year, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. But any questions about this so far before we move on? Because again, I know this is a lot, a lot of numbers and a lot of data. So we're good? Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So when people go to get tested and they don't have insurance, there's no billing, but I know if they ask for insurance, I know that sometimes they'll ask for insurance, like at Department of Public Health and stuff like that. So are we paying, is there like a significant payout for testing for people who have insurance that's coming from this plan?
Um, I don't believe-
Like those mass testing sites and things?
I don't think so. On a self-funded plan, there may be from fully funded plans. But since we're self-funded, we're paying fully ACC-related claims. And our premiums are based solely on our claims experience. So I don't believe that any of those costs are being passed on to Athens Clark County. That's one of the benefits of being self-funded. Our costs are contained specifically to our population. But if anyone with Epic, if there's a different answer, if I'm incorrect about that, please chime in. But I do believe that we're not footing the bill for those without insurance.
And is the same true for vaccinations, like people who have insurance and might announce that when they go to get a vaccine?
Correct.
There's not actually a charge for that, right?
Correct. My understanding of the vaccination, the vaccine, there's two charges related to vaccinations. There's the cost of the vaccine itself, and then there's the cost to administer the shot. My understanding is that the cost of the vaccine is being covered by the federal government, and then the administration of the shot, that cost is then paid by insurance. So I believe that's the way that's working. Now, how that works for those who are uninsured, I'm not sure. But my understanding is our health insurance is paying for the administration of the shot, the federal government paying for the vaccine itself. And again, Epic, if you have additional information on that-
Yes. Tracy, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, Stephen, go ahead.
Yep. Sure. Yeah, this is Stephen. So just to add a couple of things on that, if someone goes in for a test, for a COVID test, and they run it through Athens Clark County Insurance, that member's not going to pay anything. It can depend upon what the charge is for the COVID test itself, but it's typically not a good bit of money. And Athens does pick up that bill for the actual test itself. And then on the vaccine, similar note, there is no cost passed along to the employee or their dependents for the vaccine, but there is an administration charge in the sixty-dollar range, I believe, that would be picked up by the plan sponsor, so you all.
Interesting. So the short version is, Clark, even though people, human beings, when they go to get tested or get their vaccine are not paying anything, people who actually have insurance, those insurance providers, and so in this case, the county is paying what essentially adds up to a pretty massive amount with all the employees we have, that's not being covered by the federal government.
Right. It does that up. And if you've been through the experience, you may have noticed the sites are kind of required to ask not once, you know, multiple times to see if you have insurance. Because they want to run it through insurance primarily before it's picked up by the federal government. So, you know, if someone has insurance with you all, they're likely going to run that through the plan. Just a little evidence of the vaccine on the plan right now. Through today, you had about three hundred and ten members who have received at least one shot of the vaccine. And you have roughly two thousand five hundred or so members on your plan.
So that's eighteen grand there just on the vaccine administration fees, basically.
Yep.
To date.
Yep.
Wow.
Today, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, there's-
Can you go back one slide? I think the gentleman who just spoke answered my question. So on the previous slide, it says COVID nineteen claimants. So claimant, so out of the two thousand five hundred or two thousand two hundred or so ACC employees, one thousand two hundred and fifty-four employees or employees and retirees made a claim.
So that is all members. That could be retiree, it could be an employee, it could be a dependant or spouse. And Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that's not necessarily unique individuals. It could be that you went in and got a test, came back positive, now you're in the ER, now you're in the hospital. So one person could have multiple claims related to that COVID diagnosis that's being captured as a claimant.
Right. That's my understanding too. So I'm a good example here. I've been tested twice for COVID and received one shot of the vaccine. I believe how it will run through on the data you're seeing here is that would be three claims, claimants that have come through.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any others before we proceed? Okay.
I have one more question about the, sorry, about the cost. So a sixty-dollar administrative fee, to me, just seems like a lot. I'm wondering if we could get an explanation as to why, or like how that compares to, is it the same for every insurance provider? That's just the standard fee everywhere, or is that variable?
It's based on CMS guidelines, I believe, and they break it down into a first dose and second dose cost. So I was kind of using a ballpark estimate of sixty dollars there, but it should be pretty uniform across employers. So it's, you know, it's not going to change, not going to change much, or it really shouldn't. And then to compare it to what you may pay for a, you know, the flu vaccine, right? So if you went to your PCP to get the flu shot, you may pay a copay of twenty or twenty-five dollars, but the cost of that visit is likely seventy-five or a hundred bucks. So it's not, it's not an astronomically high number comparatively speaking.
To your point, Commissioner, though, with the cost and your question about how that compares, that brings up a good point, that a lot of the costs that we contend with, that we're trying to control, are to a large degree out of our control. Much of this is set by the industry, it's set by CMS, it's set by the pharmaceutical companies and their brokers. So when we're trying to contain or control costs, really what's happening is the cost is the cost, and we have little to no control of that. So the only levers we have is which side of the equation pays that cost. Is it Athens Clark County that's going to pay the bulk of the cost, or is it the employee? So the only real, again, levers that we have are from a cost-sharing perspective. Either the government pays more, or if we're wanting to try to decrease the cost on the government side, well, that's going to increase the cost on the employee side. So the trick is to find where that reasonable balance is, where we can balance the cost for both parties and yet still provide quality, comprehensive coverage for employees. And that's tricky, but that's where we are, because much of this is just outside of our realm. And again, that's what we're seeing with this pandemic. Not only could we not control it, we can't, we couldn't predict this. Oftentimes, Epic does a great job when they are projecting our claims. They do look at trends within our population, they look at trends within their book of business. And while we're constantly chasing a moving target, we know where the boundaries are. So we can kind of predict what's the worst-case scenario, what's the best-case scenario, and let's try to shoot for in the middle. Unfortunately, with this pandemic, it's changed the boundaries. And so we're still trying to figure out where the target is and where those boundaries are. In addition to the pandemic, we've also seen, and this is in reference to the slide I have up now, an increase in our high-cost claimants. So for example, if you look under the second bullet under according to Anthem, injury and poisoning is the diagnostic category that is driving the high-cost claims activity in the last three months. What that's referring to is one specific claim regarding a very traumatic backyard accident. So this is one claim that has already hit the two hundred thousand dollar mark. And it's interesting because, again, we're operating on a plan year cycle. So for plan year January to December of two thousand and twenty, this claim hit late in that year and hit high cost. So once it hit two hundred, I'm sorry, once it hit one hundred and seventy-five thousand, our high-cost claim coverage kicked in. Then we hit January first, that whole thing, that lever or that scale resets. That person is already up to another two hundred thousand, because that's the new kind of benchmark for the new plan year. So we've got one person who's potentially hitting a high-cost claim twice in one fiscal year, which is very rare. Last fiscal year, I believe we had about five employees and retirees that hit the high-cost mark. For this fiscal year, so far, we've had ten that have hit. And I expect at least two, if not three more, to hit. And these have been due to cancers, in some cases very rare forms of cancers. Again, this injury, some traumatic heart attack events, a lot of things that have come out of nowhere, and some have been precipitated by COVID, but not all. So again, as I mentioned before, we have multiple waves of this storm that are hitting at once. Now, all that being said, while I've just painted you a pretty bleak picture, when you take out the pandemic and when you take out the stop-loss, all those very extraordinary circumstances, and look at our claims in general, our day-to-day claims are trending at a very good level. We're below benchmarks in a lot of areas. So overall, we're doing well. It's just that we've had these two massive events that came out of nowhere that we didn't anticipate. So this first slide, again, looks at calendar year numbers. I'm going to skip and really look at fiscal year numbers because that's really what we're interested in from a budget standpoint. So if you look at this column here, this FY twenty-one recast, it's based on our claims to date and how we're trending. When you calculate that, it really looks like the net cost to Athens Clark County Government is going to be about twelve point two, maybe twelve point three million. I will say that for this fiscal year, we budgeted eleven million. But again, we've got one point seven million dollars in COVID claims that we weren't anticipating, and we've got about double the high-cost claimants than we normally have. So that's what's driving that increase. Fortunately, in years past, we have budgeted well enough that we have some fund balance built up for these types of situations. So as of now, it looks like the overage that we do anticipate we're going to have will be covered by our current fund balance, and we will not have to ask for additional funds for FY twenty-one. Moving over into FY twenty-two, it is looking like the contributions from Athens Clark County that we'll need will be about two and a half, I'm sorry, twelve and a half, twelve point six million dollars, with the employee contributions being about five point one or five point two million. So that's, and again, we're hoping that some of this may taper off a little once we get into April, May, and June. It's possible, if claims come in better, that these numbers may decrease once we have some good- once we have some good claims months and we can kind of drop off some of the bad claims months on the back end. Um, it's hard to say at this point, again, it's a moving target. Um, but we're, we're trying to, to plan for worst case scenarios. So even if this were to decrease, I don't anticipate it going down very significantly. So any questions about the active side before we move into retiree? We good? Um, interestingly.
Tracy, I had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, uh, if you could go back to the, the previous slide, and, and I know this is, uh, obviously hard to predict, but just seeing what the, the, the percentage increase had been coming into, uh, this peculiar year. Um, after FY22, I understand that, so we're projecting that because of some of these, uh, uh, because of COVID and some because of these, uh, high-end cases like you're talking about claims, you're talking about. For FY23, I know that's, that's, you know, we're looking more than a year ahead of times. But would we see, do you think that would taper back down to what this initial growth was? Or do you feel like because of, uh, the industry reaction to COVID and such, that it'll kind of stay up at that level?
Um, I'll defer that to Epic just from, from my perspective. Um, I believe what you just said may be the case, that the industry is going to react. Um, and, and there may be some increased costs to recoup, recoup losses, um, that will get passed on even to self-funded plans. Um, it, it's real, and, and I don't know what this administration is going to do in terms of healthcare costs. Um, so there are a lot of unknowns. So I think the best answer, again, I'm going to defer to Epic, is we might need to plan for these higher numbers, uh, just to be, you know, out of an abundance of caution because there is so much unknown. But, um, Stephen, I'll let you address that if you have something different.
Yeah, so that's a good question. I think, you know, I'll kind of talk out of both sides of my mouth. So I could see, to Tracy's point, the industry recouping some of their losses. Um, I could see, quite honestly, if this, um, vaccine requires boosters in the future, that's going to, um, increase administration costs of vaccines. And perhaps those that don't get it will be hospitalized. So you could see that be a cost pressure. But then there's been some good things that have come out of this, like telemedicine, which typically was a really low utilized benefit. And now we're seeing 10, 20, 30% of people get their care through their primary care via telemed, just like we're, you know, zooming our web vaccine here today. So that's something that should lower costs because it's, it's less costly to the system. So, you know, I think time will tell, but in general, going forward, at least for the next year or two, to Tracy's point, we just be, need to be a little more conservative in our, our trend assumptions and our margin assumptions. So, you know, we're not left, um, going back into that reserve again.
And, and to that point as well, Stephen, because we will be most likely dipping into our reserve, um, fairly significantly to cover overages for FY21 budget. Um, it may be that we have to look at increasing our, our margin a bit. There's always a 3% reserve. If you look, um, this line, there's a, a 3% claims margin for our reserve that we build in to help cushion in bad years, um, but in hopes that we'll have a good year and that can go into our fund balance. So it, it may be that moving out, we need to increase that claims margin, maybe to 4%, um, just to help build that fund reserve back. Okay, um, interestingly enough, our pre-65 retirees, um, though they have been hit by COVID as well, um, they do not, there, there doesn't seem to be the, the cost explosion on the pre-65 side. Um, now they have had some significant COVID claims, but I'm wondering if by and large they have, um, kind of self-isolated or, or self-quarantined more, um, and have not been out and have held their costs, um, down fairly well. So we do not anticipate being over a budget for this current year. So no need to dip into any kind of reserves. Um, and then for FY22, uh, we're not really asking for, for much more, um, than we are currently. So that, the pre-65 budget has pretty much remained, um, stable. Now, what you see here, um, and again, this is a, a busy chart and I do apologize. Um, but the left-hand side of your screen, um, these are the, the current costs for calendar year 2021 for each of the three plans, um, in each of our tier levels. And just to remind you, we have an employee-only tier, employee spouse, employee child is if it is an employee plus one child or an employee plus four children. There's that employee child tier. And then our family tier level is employee, spouse, plus one or more children. Um, so again, the left-hand side is going to show you our current rates. On the right-hand side, this is showing you the projected rates for calendar year 2022. So again, these rate increases would not go into effect until January 1 of 2022. These are also, um, shown to you on a monthly rate. I don't have them bi-weekly, um, but this is a monthly rate. So you see the employee portion and the employer portion. If you look over to the very right, far right-hand side, this shows you the employee paycheck difference. So this is the increase that the employee is paying essentially on a monthly basis. So the increase varies depending on which plan they have chosen and which tier they're in. So for someone on the Consumer Healthy Solutions Value Plan for employee only, they're going to experience an increase of $5, um, $5.66 per month. Um, that's the lowest increase, but it could go all the way up to $4,492 per month for those on the POS conventional plan with family coverage. One other thing this does not show, so this, these are base rates. We also have two surcharges. So if someone, and this only applies to the employee, if the employee smokes, then they're assessed an additional $75 per month and the tobacco surcharge, which would be added to the monthly rate that you see. Um, if they are covering their spouse and their spouse has access to other coverage, but they have chosen to opt out of that coverage and take Athens Clark County's as their primary, there is also a $75, um, surcharge for that as well. Now, employees have the option and have the opportunity to decrease their monthly healthcare costs, um, by participating, um, in our wellness program. Um, if they complete their annual health risk assessment, um, that saves them about $50 per month on this premium. And then, of course, they have the opportunity to earn an additional $175 per quarter through, um, participating in and logging their healthy activities. So there are opportunities, um, for our employees to offset some of these premium costs. Any questions about that?
Yeah, I have a question. What percentage of, of employees take advantage of that? Um, what was the first thing that you, the, the wellness? Yes, yes.
I don't have that number right in front of me. I can get that for you, but I believe we're somewhere close to 70% that, that, that do participate in terms of getting their health risk assessment. Um, in terms of those that are actively participating and earning credits throughout the year, that number drops to probably more around 40, 45%. But I can get you those exact numbers, Commissioner Myers.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Hi, this is Commissioner Wright. Um, I am one of those active participants in the wellness program. It's, I've really gotten hooked on the competitiveness of, of logging my stuff. Can you also, when you send us some of that information, can you let us know the date of our next health assess, uh, risk assessment and the blood drawing? And, you know, I want to make, I'm trying to inform other people of the, the cycle, the next cycle for July 1st. So if you'll include that in your email, that'd be great.
Okay, I will just to address that though, now that we're on a calendar year cycle, um, we'll probably move the blood and plus with the pandemic, we'll probably move the blood draw later into the year. Um, so anyone that has done, has, has already done their HRA prior to January 1, they're taken care of from January 1 to December 31st.
Okay, well, that's.
They will have to re-up until next January.
Well, that's perfect. We'll just, just keep logging in the daily things. And then, um, can anybody be, can join in after or they just need to wait? Okay.
No, you can join anytime. It's just that you don't start receiving your health risk assessment credit, nor do you have access to the well to log your activities until you have completed that assessment. So for some people, they're on it, they get everything done in December and they're ready to go come January 1st. Others kind of slack off a little bit and they may not get it done until April. And that's fine, they join at that point and start logging from that point forward.
Okay, understood. And I, and I know that on the world and Kendra, uh, communicates that really well. Um, I don't want to take up more time with your presentation on that, but I think it is important, especially when we hear about, uh, rates rising. We can, uh, the more knowledgeable we are, we can help the staff, um, get involved to where they can get this, uh, balance out some of the, uh, other costs.
Absolutely, thank you for that and we appreciate your support and your, your participation in that. Um, so just to summarize the budget request, um, for 608 budget, again, that's the, um, the active health insurance side. Um, for the ACC government contributions, that's 12.55 million. The employee contributions will come in about 5.2 million. Um, these two programs you see listed here are the Family Medical Leave Outsourcing and the Affordable Care Act Compliance Reporting. These are programs that were voted on and approved, um, a couple of years ago, but just, we split those costs out just so you can see them. So the total request from the ACC government contribution is about $12.6 million for FY22. Um, plus we also have the tuition reimbursement program and we do generally request $50,000 for that program as well. Moving into the 706 budget, um, this is our retiree health insurance budget. There, there are two portions to this budget. There's the pre-65 health insurance, so those are retirees who are under the age of 65, who are on our group plan. Um, by and large, those retirees were hired prior to 71 of 2002 and therefore do not pay a premium for that health insurance. So that is 100% funded by Athens Clark County Government. We do have a handful, um, who are paying for their dependents or who were hired after 7102, who, who do have to pay for their premiums. So the contributions from the retiree side is roughly about $50,000. But the contributions from Athens Clark County, we're requesting 4.76 million. Um, and then, of course, we have additional requests for retiree life insurance and then our retiree consulting fees. Again, this isn't an increase over last year. Um, for the post-65 budget, um, that is, and just a reminder, when a retiree turns 65, they do go onto Medicare, that becomes their primary coverage. And then they, they have the option of taking a secondary plan, be that Medicap or a Medicare Supplement Plan, Medicare Advantage. Um, Athens Clark County funds what's called a health reimbursement account for those individuals to reimburse them for some of those costs to help offset, um, that expense on them. Um, for those that are hired prior to 7102, um, they currently are receiving $2,767.44. And that increase, the way we evaluate that each year, um, is a result of the lawsuit settlement from a couple of years ago. So we do analyze that every year. Um, it's based on the Consumer Price Index for urban areas. So whatever increase or decrease that was for the prior year, we take half of that and apply it, um, apply it to the HRA. Now, one caveat about this slide, um, in the budget, um, that was submitted by, by the manager, um, we requested 1.5 million for those contributions, um, which is correct. So what has been presented and requested in the budget of 1.5 million is correct. What is reflected on the slide, unfortunately, was a mathematical error on my part. Um, the contribution is 1.5 million. Um, the increase on the HRA is only going to be 0.7%. Um, so it's only going up about, um, $19 a year versus what's reflected here. So I apologize for that error. Um, so the increase is going from the $2,067 to about a little less than $20 more. So a little less than $2,787 would actually be the, the annual allocation, um, moving forward. So my apologies. Um, for those hired after 7102, um, their contributions are remaining flat. There's no increase there. Okay, any questions about that?
Yeah, just to, just to. Yeah, just to clarify one thing for me. So as a county government, if you retire before 65, you're going to just keep going into the pool of, of, you know, the insurance auctions that probably employees have as well. But we don't have any insurance Medicaid supplements ourselves, but we have this HRA that we contribute to that, um, Medicare recipients can draw from. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'm going to zip through this last. Um, sorry, I'm taking up so much of your time, but I do appreciate your time. Um, for pension contributions, um, for the, for FY22, the minimum required contribution is 11.5 million, which I believe is what was in the budget request. Um, and you can see what's being projected for the outlying years. But for 2022, we are requesting the 11.5 million to fund our pension plan. Now, when, when we spoke last year, um, I did mention that we were looking at some different cost containment solutions. And one of those was, uh, looking at an international specialty medication provider. That would allow our, our folks who are on specialty medications to get those medications from overseas. It kind of cuts out the, the middleman distributor and it can come from, um, actual, um, manufacturers in different parts of the, of the world. Um, we were projecting, um, a savings of about $670,000 to the plan because the idea was for anyone who opted to get their medications from overseas, they would not have a copay. They would essentially get that at no cost to them. The plan would cover the cost and there would be a savings of about $670,000. However, just recently, Congress passed House Bill, um, 946, which essentially in a nutshell prevents plans from incentivizing folks to go to a particular pharmacy or to use a particular pharmaceutical provider or any type of, of mail order plan. Um, so that has put a damper on this plan to offer international specialty medications. It's also changed one of our current programs. Um, we have a mail order program whereby after three refills of a specialty or a, not just specialty, but a, um, but a maintenance medication, you're automatically enrolled in mail order, which saves the plan and does save the employee unless you opt out. Um, House Bill 946 has now kind of squashed that. We cannot make that an automatic enrollment. So you actually have to choose to enroll in that plan versus choosing to opt out of it. So it's changed that current plan and again, has, has limited our ability to incentivize, uh, this, this international specialty med. That being said, we can still offer it. Um, there's no cost to Athens Clark County to offer it as an option. Um, it would just be a matter of if individuals chose to use it, um, and there would not, we would not see that, that type of cost savings by doing so. Um, something else that's kind of on the horizon that we're looking at, we currently offer a price transparency service, um, through a company called Alight, which allows employees to contact Alight to say, hey, this is the medication I'm taking or my doctor wants me to have an MRI at this facility, um, can you do some cost comparisons for me? Um, and Alight can compare the cost of that procedure or that medication at different providers and then come back to the employee and say, you know, if you go to this facility, you're going to save $200 versus if you go into facility A. Um, Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield is developing their own tool. It's a tool called Find Care, um, which again, allows members to find in-network providers. They can compare costs of different procedures to, across different providers. Um, as mentioned, there's a, a program called Smart Shopper, um, where again, they can earn incentives for using the tool. And if they choose the lower cost provider, there are some savings that are generated for the member by doing so. Um, so that is still in development. Um, we are hoping by mid-year, that will be integrated into their Sydney Health app, which we already have access to, that we could then make available to our employees by January 1 of 2022. So we're going to be researching that more, we're going to be testing that tool. Um, I'm not sure if there's going to be a cost involved with it. Um, there may be, but again, it, it could be cheaper than what we're paying for Alight. So we could, um, potentially end our contract with Alight, move to Blue Cross and. so we could potentially end our contract with Alight, move to Blue Cross, and have a fully integrated system, and perhaps see some cost savings there. So just so you know, that is something we're researching, and we will let you know as that develops. And then moving forward into the next budget cycle, we should have some more information and details for you on that. So with that, that is the end of my presentation. Are there any other questions or concerns that you have that I can address for you?
Anything for Tracy?
I had a question. Have we ever considered hiring a doctor? And just having a doctor available for our employees to visit?
Yes, we have. So some organizations and some jurisdictions do have onsite clinics, essentially, where they do have a doctor, sometimes a nurse practitioner, onsite that can treat acute illnesses, can prescribe or dispense maintenance medications. So those types of solutions are available. From the research that we've conducted, and I'll let Epic chime in too, those typically have a fairly significant cost outlay for capital to get those clinics up and running. And from the clinics that we've talked to, they have not seen the return on investment that they had hoped. Because again, what they can treat are again, more of your acute care types of situations. And what's driving our costs is really more of the chronic illnesses, the cancers, the accidents, the heart attacks. So there's also some concern about where would we locate it, concerns about trust of the employees in using such a clinic. But again, it is something we've researched, and we can continue to research, if that's something the commission is interested in having more information about. Stephen, do you have additional comments?
No, I think you kind of outlined it perfectly.
Okay.
I know I'm interested in it. I mean, I'm looking at this flurry of co-pays and paperwork that goes back and forth for all these doctor visits. Sure would be nice if we just had a doctor people could go to, and the county would pay, and then it would all be done. I think we'd save a lot of time and frustration and paperwork, you know. People don't want to shop around for a doctor based on price. You know, they just want to go somewhere and get treatment. So I'm very interested in exploring this opportunity, because the health insurance industry is not getting any better. Thanks.
Right. Now, I will say, to do a full study to determine if that would be the best course of action for us, I believe we've priced those studies, and Stephen, again, I'm going to rely on you, I believe those were around $40,000 to do a full study on that. Is that correct?
Yep.
So if that's something the commission would be interested in funding, but it would require some additional funding to do a full comprehensive study on that.
Yeah. What would this study do? What would this study look at? Whether people need to go to a doctor? I'm sorry. Yeah, what would it do?
So there are providers that run the clinics, companies, that's all they do. They help with whether or not you're going to have a, where the doctor's contracted, and where you're getting certain prescriptions from. And so you're essentially, as part of that study, identifying the physical location, whether to build one, or have it built out within a current facility, and the provider or the company that's going to administer kind of the actual program.
You also have decisions about location that are based upon, you know, census and where employees are, and what their current healthcare provider situations are, whether they'd be willing to visit, you know, quote-unquote, company doctor, whether that includes worker comp, or drug testing, or other things that, you know, might be located at a clinic. Certainly, you can start small and build out from there, but primarily, as Stephen said, the initial arrangement is capital, and you have to look at the liability piece as well.
And part of the feasibility study, too, would analyze our claims to determine what types of services would be beneficial for a clinic, and again, what type of return on investment that could potentially generate. So there are a lot of pieces to that feasibility study that would have to be looked at, again, by folks like Epic and other experts.
I wonder if there'd be... This is Kelly. I wonder if there'd be utility to examining a partnership with Athens Neighborhood Health Center, with whom we already have a relationship. And obviously, they have space, and so, you know, perhaps rather than dedicating staff just to ACC employees, sort of pooling with a set of community members?
We can definitely research that avenue to see if that's a possibility.
Mayor, I spoke at the time to suggest the same thing, I think, but I'd love, when I think of how this would go, that's the route that I, without really knowing the details of it, am most in favor of wanting to look into as well.
I think you have to be, you know, the feasibility study will help us determine, you know, what are we accomplishing? Because we can decide, you know, that any of that may be really helpful for employees and convenient, and it may boost even productivity. But whether it is something that we invest in as aimed at driving down healthcare costs, that may be a different question. So we can produce some information around that and see what options there might be.
I'll just jump in and put my support for a feasibility study. I think, to me, it sounds like $40,000, looking at what these future trends are looking like, and as Commissioner Edwards put out, the future of our insurance industry. I think a $40,000 feasibility study might be a wise investment at this point.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question about a feasibility study now that we're here? Would that include looking at the possibility of mental health care and/or dental health care as part of that as well? Or would there be additional cost? Like, could we wrap that into the same thing without it adding much cost?
Well, currently, our dental is, you know, paid for by the employee, and that's negotiated with, you know, a separate group. That would be a different cost to migrate towards providing that service directly. Jeff, I'll defer to you on that further.
Stephen, I'll just comment real quickly. On the dental side of things, we generally don't see that included as part of an onsite clinic or nearsite clinic. On the mental health side of things, I could see that being a possibility we could look at as part of the feasibility study. Also, what has really been utilized a lot, especially during the pandemic, is the telemedicine version of mental health. So folks can have that one-on-one consultation with a mental health expert over the phone, or via Zoom or Skype. So that has likely seen a good bit of uptake in your population and utilization the last, you know, year or so.
Commissioner Hou also mentioned, we do have our employee assistance program, so there is some assistance available along those lines. You may be wanting to expand that further, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Well, indeed. And, oh, sorry, I was just going to say, to me, this also marries well with some of the discussions we've had about wanting to look at maybe providing more resources to the community at large. And so if there's a way to kind of marry the expansion of services for, you know, lower-income residents, while also being able to, you know, provide more efficiency in our system, might be a win-win.
Well, if, and I want to make sure, that would be a big demarcation between, you know, the benefits being discussed for the employees, and then expanding those services outward. So what we'll do, if Jeff and everyone agrees, is come up with a scope and a more solid figure for what it would take to check the feasibility of our own onsite or partnered clinic, which would, Jeff, just to qualify for everybody, I think my understanding of these types of models, that it works well when you have either a physician or a nurse practitioner, perhaps co-located with some pharmacy for some regular routine medications that tend to help people who may develop chronic conditions in the absence of those, you know, and really help long-term, drive long-term costs down. So with those qualifiers, Jeff, does that sound, which you might be able to look into?
Yes, sir.
I have one last thing to say real quick. You know, in my book, dental care is healthcare. So, you know, tooth issues can become very serious, obviously. I mean, what if, you know, expanding on my earlier idea, what if we contracted with a dentist to set up a mobile dental service twice a year, where employees could come and get their teeth cleaned? I mean, is anybody open to that idea? I mean, I'm thinking about the mobile van that comes to the elementary schools once a year and checks everybody's teeth and gives them a cleaning. I mean, what?
We could potentially look at that. I know with the wellness fair that we have each year, which unfortunately, we didn't get to have this year because of the pandemic, with our wellness fair each year, we do have a dental group that comes in and does oral health, or oral cancer screenings. And we also offer that another time during the year, where employees can go to a designated location. We have a dentist come onsite, and they do the oral cancer screenings. I mean, we can always ask to see if doing just routine cleanings could be something that could be incorporated into those types of programs. I don't know, I don't have a feel for what that answer would be. I don't know what's involved in that, but it's something we can definitely ask.
Yeah, I'd be interested in two visits a year with a cleaning and an x-ray.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'd be interested in contracting with somebody to come twice a year and provide employees with cleanings and x-rays.
Now, I will say this, for those that have our dental insurance, the two cleanings per year are covered at no cost for the employee with dental coverage. They also get, the routine x-rays are also included in that. Those are considered preventive, and are covered at 100% with our dental plan. But we can definitely look at what type of onsite options we could offer for convenience.
Thanks.
All right. Tracy, Jeff, everyone, thanks so much.
I've had my hand up. Maybe I'm not on screen.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Thanks. So when, there are other municipalities that have something that's along the lines of, and this is coming from, you know, my mother was a nurse, so it's not always the doctor that you need, but the nurse practitioner, registered nurse, some of those screening things. And sometimes they cycle in, and it's like once a week at a designated part of, you know, one of our facilities. It would be a regular thing in that someone would sign up. It'd be confidential, so that everybody doesn't know what's going on. So I would hope that as we look into what a study would look like for an onsite or nearsite screening opportunity that might make it easier for folks, that we not just, if we price it out, so that it's not just a doctor onsite, but they usually, for a lot of their assistance, it's the nurse practitioner or the nurse that can help, and then refer typically these screenings, like the wellness, what you just referred to, that we didn't have. But anyway, it's referring to the next level and getting people involved. I would say, with my experience with dentistry, is that if people get or into dental care, they're getting the dental insurance for what you described, is they're too cleaning and x-ray preventative, and it would maybe be really hard to get somebody to go to someone that, in the mobile clinic. But I'm interested in learning what those costs would be to help our staff have easier access to all that. That's my opinion on that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thanks, Tracy. Thanks, Jeff, and everyone else. All right, I think we'll move on to next section of the evening, discussion of friendly and hostile architecture.
Mayor, before we get to that, and just because it's related to the compensation and benefits presentation, just a quick update on the public safety pay plan enhancement. I want to really thank our HR staff, Jeff and Tom and others, for working with Mercer in helping to look at a whole new way of helping recruitment and retention, particularly in the areas where we struggle the most. And I also want to applaud our public safety chiefs for coming forward with constructive ideas and being our partners and working through this. The plan design is nearly finalized. There's only a few small details to address. I think one thing to note, that this plan is based on current market data. That's one thing that took some time to get to. So we feel confident that the ranges are competitive with other jurisdictions. The cost in FY22, as we've talked about at previous retreats in the Big Rocks, is estimated approximately $2 million with average, you know, annual costs to maintain and continue the plan to be competitive, projected between, be between $800,000 and $1 million a year. And currently, staff is in the process of developing communication materials and procedures, and over the next two months, we'll be rolling out plan details and communicating with employees. And the target implementation date is June 13. And so, just to be clear, what happens on June 13 is all the public safety employees would be placed, well, they're being placed into the plan now, but it will go into effect June 13. And so there's a pay adjustment that's required to place them into the plan. And then beginning in January of the ensuing year, January 2022, the steps will start, you know, folks that do a step increase will be moved in the plan. And every six months, and it really depends on your annual, your hire date, as to when you progress to that step. And rather than wait once a year to do it, we're going to do it twice a year on six-month intervals. So there's some information for you on that. That will continue to move forward, and, you know, we'll keep you up to date. Thanks, Mayor. If you would like, I'll go ahead and introduce our next speaker, if there are no questions on that.
That'll be fine.
Okay. Well, there was, as we talked about Clayton Street, and as you know, we are, ground's been broken, concrete's being poured. We've got two items tonight to discuss that further. There were some questions about the benches and the street furniture that we had. And Commissioner Hou introduced us to the term hostile architecture, asked some questions along those lines. And they were timely questions, because, you know, we've yet to order these benches, but we're getting close to where we need to understand what we're doing. And rather than get in and try and prospect each individual piece of furniture, I think staff listened to some of the conversation and wanted to learn more along with you about what is hostile architecture. And so with your leave and the mayor's direction, we've asked Jacobs to reach in their organization and bring somebody up. And we have Randy Sorenson with us tonight, a design principal with Jacobs. And he specializes in urban design, landscape architecture, and site master planning. He's a fellow of the American Society of Landscape Architects. And a few examples of his urban works are the Riverfront Plaza in Hartford, Connecticut, the North Bridge Park in Boston, Massachusetts, both design award winners from the American Society of Landscape Architects. So he's prepared this primer for all of us to understand what hostile architecture is. And then, you know, when we talk about hostile architecture, and he'll go into this, you know, we also want it to be age-friendly. And I think that's important. I know Commissioner Wright has been an advocate for us aligning ourselves with the AARP, you know, age-friendly city. And so how all these things intersect, and really what we're looking, after we all learned together, is for you to give us some general direction on future street furniture, benches, things of that nature. And rather than get into explicit specifications, if we get what the commission would like to see, we will begin to, you know, shape our specifications to honor that intent that you, a consensus of you that would relay. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sorenson, and I appreciate you being with us tonight, Mr. Sorenson.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. It's certainly a pleasure to um, be able to address you. Um, I wish that I could be there in person to um, present to you, but COVID has made that a little bit difficult, and so we've learned to use technology, um, I think quite effectively. So, I've been asked to just talk to you about um, a comparison of ho- hostile architecture um, as well as age-friendly architecture. Um, Chief, go to the next slide. So, you know, what is hostile architecture? Well, I don't like the term because it's a little bit misleading. Kind of seems like it's an angry building of some kind, but what it really is, it is defensive design. And it uses design to exclude or restrict certain groups of people. Most commonly, it's it's the homeless, um, skateboarders, teenagers, other um, quote undesirable individuals from using public spaces. Now, examples of hostile architecture are all around and all around you, and you may not even realize it. Um, some examples of hostile architecture include objects that are designed in such a way that it makes their use difficult for certain groups of people. So an example would be um, these benches. You can see that they have arms in the middle of them. Um, that's primarily there to um, keep homeless people from sleeping on the benches, making it uncomfortable. Um, and benches are today are even designed with uneven surfaces to prevent sleeping and and make it uncomfortable. Others such as um, sloped benches or seatings without backrests. Um, things such as seating made from slick material like metal, anything that makes sitting for a very long period of time uncomfortable.
Sorry.
So, o- other things, um, even besides street furniture is um, making it uncomfortable for people to um, sit in impromptu ways such as, you know, al- along a street um, window sill or um, al- along the top of a wall by by putting um, things that make it uncomfortable to sit there. And then there's things like adding metal pins to ledges and sills to prevent skateboarders. We all know what um, skateboarders can um, do to certain surfaces of of benches and walls. All of these are um, attempts to solve urban design issues without really addressing the core problem. Um, and they tend to sanitize public spaces such that they um, deter inclusivity. Now, good street, good streetscape design um, can result in some really positive things. Downtown revitalization, um, big improvements to public space, which I know that you are in the process of of working on, and people returning to the downtown neighborhoods. Um, this is once they return, the defensive space results in less crime. Crime goes down. Um, it creates enhanced aesthetics, um, and overall improve and improves economics for your downtown area. So, um, it's important that you think about creating an inclusive destination that's a friendly environment for all, not just just a small group. And I like I like this quote, "If you plan cities for cars and traffic, you get cars and traffic. If you plan for people and places, you get people and places." So, thinking about the environment of of this public domain and space is is really important, particularly thinking about who's going to be using it. Um, so this presentation is going to focus on seating options in public places. And it it's not all comprehensive, but I'll provide you some ideas on how to begin to think differently about what could happen on your downtown streets. And I specifically want to point out that this is educational in nature. Um, I'm not here promoting any particular type of solution, simply want to educate you to the subject. So, what if we think about um, sitting types? People sit in all different kinds of manners that they find comfortable. Um, I know like me, I'm I'm getting a little bit on the older side, um, so I like a bench with a back to it versus a bench without a back. Um, some people like to lounge, so we all have different ways in which we like to sit. So there's um, all kinds of types of seating. Um, there's people who like to be in groups. Um, there are some who like to be secluded by themselves. Um, there's elderly or handicapped needing places to rest. There's diners who want to sit outdoor, you know, in an outdoor cafe atmosphere. Um, all kinds of people looking at different ways to use seating options. But specifically, we wanted to talk about age-friendly seating. Um, the statistics show that we are living longer, and by twenty thirty, the proportion of people over sixty will have risen by thirty percent. This insight creates a challenge for all planners and decision makers. Areas need to be ergonomically designed with this in mind. We need to make these areas easily accessible and provide comfortable seating areas for the less able in our future communities. Now, I use this as an example. Um, a bench may be hostile to some because of a center divider. Um, but it does accommodate the needs of elderly um, with backs um, who they they want backs on the seat, they like higher seats that are slightly tipped forward. It makes it easier for them to get back out of the bench versus a a low bench with no back. Um, footrests are something that um, they seem to enjoy. And they also like to have places for wheelchairs or um, rollators so that they can sit next to someone and and be a part of the conversation or the group at hand. So, as you can see on the right is the proposed bench for Clayton Street. Um, it has a a center divider in it. Well, it could be made less hostile simply by removing the center armrest and making it more inclusive. Um, now, some people do like to be separated, so maybe perhaps there's some of each. Defensive or inclusive? Well, hostile architecture um, or defensive design will result in 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 sterile public spaces devoid of life and people. So putting people first in the design press process will result in a vibrant downtown street life, a place where everyone likes to go. So I do believe that inclusive design is the answer, and seating that allows flexibility, accommodates for all ages, is comfortable and provides various kinds of sitting solutions will bring a long-lasting results to your community. With that, I'll open this up for um, conversation or questions.
Thanks, Randy. Questions from commissioners? Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for this, Randy. I appreciate the the uh, having this presentation so we can have this discussion. Um, and to me, it comes that really just comes down to uh, our intent here. Um, I I appreciate the way that this is framed. Um, you know, the argument for having uh, some dividers is, you know, having that for, you know, for uh, elderly individuals be able to get up easier. Uh, but in the past, at least what we have now, where, and I'm not aware of any of our benches that have middle dividers that also have outside armrests. We talked about the ones outside City Hall, the ones that are along Washington Street. They only have them. So they only provide a person one hand to help get up. Get isn't specifically in the place where it prevents a person from lying down. So to me, that shows the intent there of putting them in the middle isn't to help elderly individuals. Because if that was the intent, we'd have one on the outside. But the intent there instead is to be uh, yeah, to prevent, what a phrase that I hate that was used here, and I know you weren't using it that way, but undesirable. Um, and so I think it all comes down to our intent here. If we see a reason for our place for us to have to have uh, some seating that has two-hand rests for elderly folks to be able to get up and down, I think that's fine if we see a situation where we need those in certain places. But the default here should be handrest on the outside that is not intentionally hostile towards certain groups.
Others? Carol?
Yeah, thi- this is just making me think a little bit about um, benches in in general. Um, and lack thereof in places. Um, I I know that one of my things in my head is all the time when my mom was here, living with me, and she used a rollator. Um, our our benches are so far apart, but maybe that's done on purpose. Now I'm thinking, maybe we choose to have fewer benches um, so that they aren't inviting to different populations. Where, and and I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking this through. That might not be the case at all. But I think in terms of an aging population, um, we will need to be thinking about putting benches and as many places as we can through the eyes of an eighty-five or ninety-year-old. Um, there's a lot of places that we have, again, the Greenway and the Firefly, where if your mobility challenge, there is not a place to sit. Um, anyway, those are my thoughts. And I I much prefer having the armrest on the right side, as I brought up to Commissioner Hul. You know, if you're a a mother or father with young children who get tired and want to lie down on the bench and put their head in your lap, you can't do that with that armrest in the middle. Um, so there's another reason. So, it's my thoughts.
Thanks, Carol. Any others?
Yeah, um, I guess I'll chime in here. I appreciate that we're here, so thanks, y'all. Um, and I y'all mostly heard my thoughts on this already, you know, but basically, I I love that there's three benches here that are in Athens Clark County, uh, some with and some without those outside railings. But, yeah, I mean, to me, it's pretty simple, just remove those center benches, the the center railings, I mean, from the benches. I I, you know, in terms of having specialized um, options for folks with disabilities or who are elderly, I do like that, uh, you know, building those into spaces where we think that it really makes sense, especially in some downtown spaces. But I'd also point out that the example they used was a very different kind of bench, you know, with a much higher back and a tilted seat and everything. So, um, I'm all for us maybe trying to thoughtfully augment with some specialized seating here and there, but for the most part, in my mind, it's just remove these railings. And then to kind of take it a step further, I don't know how we would write a policy exactly because, again, I think it comes down to intention. So maybe this looks more like a a resolution or something to kind of guide the intention moving forward. Um, but I I'm glad that we're talking about generally, you know, defensive design or hostile architecture and not just with benches, because there's lots of ways that you see spikes and sprinklers and other things used to deter use of space. And I would hate for that sort of thing to pop up here, although we haven't seen that happen here. So, um, if there's a way for us to kind of comprehensively address this immediate need downtown and then maybe set the stage for future design, I'd I'd love to do that.
Thanks, Jesse.
Um, I can I, can I add something?
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I I, thanks to Commissioner Myers for bringing up the the concept of parents and small children. You know, that those are the kinds of folks that need to use a whole bench, you know, if a if a parent is out with a couple of small children and some packages, et cetera, and needs to sit down to gather things up, you know, having that center rail is a real impediment. Um, and also, I'm looking at the the proposed benches for Clayton Street. And um, I'm I'm wondering why that design was chosen. Did that go through the public review process? And I'm wondering about the ergonomics of those vertical slats versus your traditional horizontal slats. I mean, I've always found those vertical slats to be much less comfortable.
That did go through the uh, public input process, and uh, that was the, from the preferences, this was the the bench on the right with the center rail uh, was the one that was voted the most highest. But the bench on the left is the exact same bench, different color, but without the center rail. So it comes in both.
So, so it was based on aesthetics? Were they tested out as far as comfort goes?
No, it was based on uh, images for aesthetics.
Anybody else?
I'd like I'd like to comment.
Go ahead.
I just sent everybody a picture that I took downtown recently uh, of one of the examples of our benches with the center. Um, you know, being able to push up, it's it's kind of, uh, there's so many details in it for me visually. Uh, one, I want to increase, and I think we are with the Clayton Street design, improvements improving the number of benches that we have, and I do like the idea of us having a variety of them. And I think that it might be that having a longer bench allows the the second arm to be what would be in between an individual. You see, you see how the one on, the the one, the black bench here? And elder, either those elderly people, they would not be able to reach either of those two arms. You see what I'm saying? I I think that to to address age-friendly, the end of the bench could have a, you know, an arm that would be a typical size between two people, I mean, a person, right, to push themselves up. And then if the bench is long, like these seem, longer than the example I showed you, then that leaves a length for the group, like you're talking, whether it's a family or somebody, um, yeah, laying down and taking taking a load off their feet or propping their feet up. But so having it mid bench uh, does seem less inviting and functional to me. And so it seems to me like also where the benches are going to be close to handicap parking spots are also areas that we would have the age-friendly designation and then also the space that would allow somebody to sit in a wheelchair next to someone who's in the bench. So I think if we we can, I don't know, I just think we can do it all, and we have the a mixture of it. Um, and when there is a bench that has the second rail, it's within reach of what an individual could use it to help them in and out of the seat. That, so that's what I'm seeing on this um, discussion and us moving forward with what's going to be friendly for everybody, and then just also remembering that from what I've, well, what I've learned is that age-friendly designation and criteria is also helpful for uh, those with disabilities, which is uh, many ages. And some of them are just temporarily disabled, uh, like I was for pregnancy. But there's other um, times when people need that type of assistance from where they're sitting. So I I I like the idea of us having a mixture of all of them and seeing how that goes.
I'll point out just, I'll point out just one um, thing is that, you know, some of these benches can be um, easily made more age-friendly simply by raising them a couple of inches. So like if you if you set this bench on a two-inch um, raised block on both ends, all of a sudden, it becomes a lot easier for someone who's elderly to get out of that bench, and it really doesn't cost much, and you haven't really changed the aesthetics of the bench.
You're you're exactly right. And if you were here in town, you'd be able to see how those kind of creative problem solvies happening from the angle that we have on our street. If everybody pictures the benches in front of Last Resort and um, on the other end of Clayton, it's already been um, renovated. Um, so a lot of that's done for angling, but I think if we learn what that height is and um, not go for a more expensive bench, but to be able to put that block that you're saying that rises it, um, I think Um, I think that's going to attract people and people who know where they're comfortable sitting will continue to know those ceilings, which I think it's important to have that variety.
Thanks, Allison. Any others? All right. So, um, ju- just to summarize, uh, seems like there's pretty high level of interest in having, uh, you say a majority or, or large array of benches that don't have the center component. Um, but some that do, uh, and potentially some that have the, the sort of raised profile that Randy just described, where you might have the, the blocks on either end. So, uh, so everybody feel comfortable with staff sort of developing that palette of different seating to accommodate a variety of situations? Jesse?
Um, I, I think what Commissioner Wright was describing makes sense to me as if, if there's going to be some kind of specialized bench, you know, like with the railing over a bit, but that, that thing that we saw a photo of, that's just one with like a wide thing in the middle. I don't feel like we should have any of those. I don't think I heard anybody say that we should have those. So, uh, to, in my mind, you know, the old adage, like you know it when you see it. It's hard, it's hard to describe it in writing, but you know it when you see it. And maybe now that we've all gone through this kind of presentation, it's easier to know what we're seeing. Um, so I don't know exactly how to codify that or if it needs to be. But, um, I guess for me, the two-part question is not only what to do in the immediate on Clayton Street, but also what to do elsewhere in downtown, because we're not putting new benches everywhere, but I'd like to at least remove those. You know, the, we ended up here because those railings were put in without there ever being a public discussion. They just kind of happened one day or one month. Um, so now that we've had the discussion, I, I would just like to see them removed and maybe that sets the stage for the future.
Uh, Melissa?
Yeah, um, that, that center rail doesn't seem to be serving any function other than to prevent people from lying down. I mean, it's not something that you could reach down and push yourself up from because it's, you know, lo- located like four feet from the other railing. So, I mean, I would lean towards not having that center rail at all unless there are, you know, a handful of specialized benches that are specifically designed for elderly or, um, other abled folks who, who need that extra armrest to get up.
Allison?
Um, back to some other, um, types of individuals who need to sit often. Um, and we do have a large obese, um, population. And so I think that we should also be sensitive to some people who do need that extra width. So I think that in having the variety that we're talking about and moving forward, I think that some of the benches that we currently have, that there are people who are wide enough and who I have seen down there who do need that width, breadth. Um, that didn't necessarily fit into my age-friendly one, but it does fit into what some people have. So if we would continue to be mindful of the diversity that we're talking about, um, and move forward with the new ones, um, I think that that would be helpful for some people who, um, do actually need that, that width. And they do need that handrail. Um, wide.
Blaine, as an operational question, do, do you have a sense that you've got guidance that you would be looking for?
I think so. Um, I, I think we can come back with some, um, some ideas, uh, and share that, uh, just for some general feedback. And, um, you know, it could be something that, that we, uh, you know, commission. So two things, uh, the immediate, as Commissioner Hull mentioned, and then the long-term. Uh, I think we've heard some good feedback and I'll get with staff on the long-term being what will ultimately go on Clayton. And then what to do with our existing bit benches. And so, uh, I will circle back with y'all and it could be that we just kind of deal with this through a NOPA. Let me talk to staff, but, uh, this has been a good discussion and very helpful.
Great. Thank you, everyone. And Randy, thanks for joining us tonight. Um, all right, we are remaining downtown for our next conversation. So I'll turn it back over to you, Blaine.
Thanks, Mayor. And, uh, appreciate everyone working with us on this. Uh, it's not unlike, I guess, building your own house. Uh, the walls start to go up and you start having ideas and real dimensions to deal with. And, um, I think one of the assumptions that, that, uh, many of us made were that the buildings downtown, uh, were, you know, uh, equidistant from each other as they progressed down Clayton. But that's simply not the case. As you approach Lumpkin Street on Clayton and the other end on Thomas Street, the buildings actually come in closer together. And that pinching, if you will, uh, you know, we were, the staff, the designers worked from the, the middle of the road back out to the buildings. And so what suffered there, uh, was, uh, some of the sidewalk cafes. And you were very clear about wanting to, uh, keep those sidewalk cafes, preserve them as much as possible because that really adds the ambiance downtown. Uh, and so staff has been hard at work. Um, as you know, uh, there were some mockups done of actual dimensions, um, of what the planners might look like. It, the furniture zone, uh, you know, we've got to make up the space somewhere. We can't make it up in the travel lanes. We can't make it up in the parking stalls. We need, you know, adequate right-of-way for people to move up and down the sidewalk. So that really leaves the sidewalk cafes or the furniture zone. And so hearing, if y'all follow me, no inclination to alter the sidewalk cafes. Then we focused on the furniture zone and most specifically the planners. Uh, and so tonight, we want to come back to you with some proposed revisions to preliminary plans that will, in effect, eliminate many of the planners in the mid-block areas, but preserve them, uh, you know, at the, at the, uh, crosswalks and at, at, at the ends of the street with the intent of preserving the sidewalk cafes and allowing enough space for people to traverse and gather on the sidewalks. Uh, this is really a two-part, um, solution, if you will. One is, and it's in the current agenda cycle for you to consider, are some minor changes to the sidewalk cafe ordinance, which would allow, uh, a little more, uh, wiggle room for sidewalk cafes as it relates to the new banding strip, which, uh, you, be, be discussed tonight, what the banding strip is and what function it, it plays. And so that legislative, uh, action needs to take place for part of the solution. And the other part is, is physical in nature, and that's what the basis of this presentation is, is to show you those proposed amendments to the preliminary plans. So with that, we've got Keith Sanders, our SPOS and TSPLOS program administrator, and Diana Jackson, the SPOS project administrator over the Clayton Street project now. And they're here with us tonight to walk us through that presentation. I'll turn it over to you, Keith.
Okay. Thank you, Blaine. Appreciate that. Um, well, I don't feel like I need to do much presentation now. I need to skip a bunch of slides because, uh, I think you covered it all. Uh, so we, uh, we're going to go through our, our, uh, presentation. Uh, we'll go through an abbreviated history. You know, this project has got an extensive, uh, project history. If, if I was doing the, uh, full version, it, I think takes five or six slides just for a list of dates. Uh, but all of that history is available on the website, uh, and it'll be in the agenda report, uh, for you. But just a quick, you know, this project started, uh, because not everybody was on the mayor commission when it started back in 2012. You know, we put together, um, a design to begin with that kept three lanes. And, uh, we put that out to bid and the first time we got zero bids. Uh, the second time, um, sorry, there's a typo here. It says two bids, but I think we actually got one and it was about three times the budget. So, uh, the part of the plan then was mayor commission, but mayor commission put it on hold so we could do some additional studies and we were also waiting for the TSPLOS funding to come out. Uh, and that, along that time in 2017, we also split the project into two phases, bringing some of that work in-house for transportation. Oh, sorry, I don't see the presentation. Let me get, sorry, you're not seeing my presentation.
We were looking at you, Keith.
Oh goodness, I was making faces too, probably.
It was great.
Now, now we got it. Uh, so, uh, now that I'm embarrassed sufficiently. So in, in January of 2018, uh, we brought the co- project concept, uh, to mayor commission. And at that point, we took, the decision was made to split the, uh, project, uh, I mean, to, uh, change it to two lanes of traffic and get rid of that middle, uh, third middle lane that was used for loading zone and move that to, uh, side streets. And we also deepened the parking stalls and changed them forty-five degrees. And, you know, the project concepts, as they generally do, has a list of must-haves, uh, nice wanted, nice, highly wanted and nice-to-haves. Um, I think we've gotten most of these, uh, all of these features incorporated in, into the design. Um, you know, some of the, I bring it back, this back up because all of these are important. The storm drain conveyance, as we got into the first preliminary, uh, by end phase one, locked in some, some points that we can't, uh, without considerable expense, do some things that were asked in this revision. So, um, yeah, that kind of locked us in place. The lighting, we're doing, uh, light, we're, we are doing the increased lighting, um, and safety for pedestrians and vehicles, the enhanced streetscape. All of these things are incorporated into the preliminary plans, uh, both the original version and the revised version. So that, uh, first preliminary plans, uh, came in June of 2018. And that's also when we decided to, uh, get TPW to do the, uh, storm drain work. And, and really this was a, a, just a refinement of the, the project concept. But one thing I wanted to highlight, when we did take, take out that, uh, uh, center lane, um, we did pick up added sidewalk space. Um, it, it, when we did the original presentation, we gave you some dimensions. I'm not sure if that was really visible. So what's in green is where we picked up that additional sidewalk space. And as Manager Williams, uh, was talking about, when you look at, uh, East Clayton at Lumpkin, you see the green band is very thin. And as you go, uh, up Clayton to the east, the band, that green banding gets wider. We picked up more sidewalk space. And that's because the right-of-way is, is very narrow at Lumpkin and then it gets narrow again down at Thomas. So we had less space to begin with, uh, and we certainly weren't moving the buildings. And when we set the fixed widths, uh, everywhere else, um, it kind of, it, it trickles down. So.
And Keith?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. And if I might, I just want to keep our nomenclature, you know, um, consistent because folks are watching. You said green band and, and we're going to differentiate, that's not the banding strip that we mentioned earlier. Uh, this is just a shaded area to show, uh, you know, extra space that was picked up.
Yes, sorry, yes, exactly right. The, the green that's highlighted there is just the, that's the extra sidewalk space that was picked up when we moved the curb lines out by getting rid of that third, uh, that third lane. And as I, as I mentioned before, when we did the preliminary plans in phase one and set the storm drain, all of these red arrows, and, and I know it's, it's a busy slide and it may be hard to read, but all of those red arrows indicate, uh, places where we're picking up stormwater off of the street. Uh, and once we set those, it set the curb line and for everything else to follow. Uh, and those locations, we, in theory, they could be moved, but the expense to move them, because you would have to move the piping and considerable things underground, the utility relocations then come back into play. So it becomes quite an extensive process and not only extensive, but expensive to try to relocate, uh, the storm drain inlets that have already been laid out. And that's important when we get to talking about increasing the size of the bump outs. And then also following the history in February of nineteen, uh, we got the phase two plans, which was the streetscape portion, which delineated the planners, the pavers, benches, um, and where we were putting all of those. So just to zoom in a little bit on, on one section of that. A, and I guess I'm back to green, but it's a different green. The, on the phase two plans that were approved, if you can see all of the green boxes that are in between the blue boxes. Well, all of those green block, boxes, um, were indicating where planners were shown. And as you can see, that's a lot of them. Um, and it, it pretty much is filling the, uh, the furniture zone with either planners or fixtures of parking meters, lights, uh, and the benches. Uh, so it left the pedestrian space that we had allocated, uh, for that. Uh, you know, I could say at this point, the, the planners that are shown on the preliminary plans phase two, uh, also brought with it for, uh, landscape management staff to maintain those. It was going to be a need for an additional person that would have come into the budget this year and also another fifty thousand, uh, dollar increase to the budget for that maintenance. So fast forward to this year, as we got into construction, we started on this initial work zone at Lumpkin. Um, we started, we were, it, it really came to light how much space was going to be left, uh, between the, uh, planners and the cafes. And as Manager Williams said, we did some mockups, which we'll see just a minute. Uh, it also brought to light, the planners were originally going to be used also for stormwater infiltration. Uh, and this, in the initial part of construction, we found that really probably was not going to turn out, uh, very well for us. And I'll show you some slides in a second for that. And we also have, uh, there's some new code changes that have come into play that are changing how we can do the layout for the festoon lighting. Uh, and also about this time, we also have brought Diana Jackson, who has been with Jacobs, longtime Athens resident. Uh, we've brought her in to manage the rest of this project so that we could reallocate, uh, Derek to the trails and Firefly and the, the Greenway projects. And, uh, just trying to ramp up for the 2020 program as well. So when Atlanta Gaslight started their work on the utility relocations and opened up trenches along the buildings and the sidewalks and in the street, and we got some heavy rain events, uh, and some, although they tried their best to keep the water out of the trenches, uh, we still had some of the, the coverings that failed and we flooded a couple of basements. As you, pictures on the right, the basement walls all throughout Clayton, uh, they're very porous. You know, they're hundreds of years old, uh, rock in a lot of cases, failing joints. And so putting that water below ground, uh, for the infiltration cleanup is probably not going to work well long-term. And we've got some other solutions to that that we're going to show you tonight as well. Uh, finally, some pictures of what we did for mockups to kind of give you that idea. Uh, some, some of you saw these on the street, uh, but in case you didn't, I wanted you to see the, the photos of these. The, the plywood boxes would indicate, uh, on the lower end of Clayton, where we've already, uh, done the streetscape improvements down there. We added these to give you a visual reference of what the new part would look like when we put planners and railings, um, in the furniture zone. Yeah, in hindsight, after seeing it like this, I don't think that's what mayor and commission had envisioned. And so as, as we started talking, we've, we've talked to some of the mayor, to the mayor and some of the commissioners, thought that we needed to put forth this plan, uh, to revise and remove many of those off of the pedestrian path. And the, the recent cafe ordinance, um, revision that's, um, has, has resolved, uh, the, the areas for the cafes. Uh, we just had, you know, recent conversations even today to go over that with some of the, um, the property owners down there. And I think they understand that. They get the cafes that they, they have always intended, um, for that space. So. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Diana and let her bring to you what, uh, what's not changing and what we are looking to change and what those revisions might look at, look like. Diana?
Thanks, Keith. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. So I'm not going to read you these things because you guys are all know how to read. But, you know, we're not changing trees, we're not changing poles, we're not changing inlets, we're not changing parking spots or the, or the type of parking. However, um, we tried to listen to what you wanted to, wanted us to do with respect to making sure that there was enough space for pedestrians to be able to enjoy Clayton Street. So we eliminated the mid-block planners. We increased the sizes of the bump outs at the, and at the corners. We reduced some of the thermoplastic crosshatching striping. Um, but removing some of the planners, we're going to have to maybe get some steps to get you from the street down to the sidewalk. And we'll show you some of those pictures. And, um, we had to change some of the festoon lighting, which I'll show you a picture of. Um, I've been coordinating with Eric Lyszewski. Um, we had a long talk just last week about what these changes might be that you might vote on and how that it might affect his, um, art installation. And he actually had a lot of input in the beginning when we were starting to talk about the revisions because we talked about maybe as you put in planters, where the bollards are in some cases at the, at the college Clayton. And he said, no, 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 that would really mess with my arts. at the, at the College Clayton. And he said, no, 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 that would really mess with my art. So we just took that off the table. Um, and then I wanted to give you a little idea of what we're planning for, for the stormwater filtration at a different place, not at Clayton Street in each individual, um, planter. So next slide, Keith. So, um, if we take out the planters, um, just wanted to show you that the trees are still remaining. The curb and, and gutters are still remaining. Um, this is kind of an idea of the plantings that we would be using. So very similar to what College Square has. Um, again, we didn't change a lot on this end of the building or this end of the corridor because they've already got curb and gutter poured. So we didn't want to make them jackhammer it out. So if you'll go to the next slide, Keith. Here's where you can see at that mid-block crossing, we actually pushed out the, the width of that mid-block crossing by maybe a foot and a half to two feet, reducing some of the thermoplastic there. Uh, moving down the street, um, I think you can see it. It might be hard to see there, Keith. Um, did we show? I guess that's on the next ones. Okay. So again, we're, we're bumping out. You, you can see at Jackson Street, we actually eliminated all the thermoplastic on the, um, east side of the, of the, um, bump out there on both the north and south side of the street. Do the same on the opposite at Wall Street. So again, we can't really change what's happening on the west side of the bump outs due to the storm drain inlets. But we basically pushed as much as we could out on the east side. We did the same right there. Um, down by Thomas Street in front of the, the Poki place. And so we, we really, um, increased those, working with central services and got their input too. So I think that that's, you know, a pretty good solution there. Now go ahead to the next one, Keith. Um, so again, we were talking about, the planters kind of took up some of that difference in elevation. So now you're going to see possibly one step, and we've kind of tried to identify that where the red arrows are pointing. We might have one step like we have at College Square or two steps like we have at College Square. Um, we would do railings and stuff similar to what we already have at College Square. There's no sense in changing that to keep some, some sort of a theme going. Um, if you go to the next slide, Keith. Um, again, the worst case for the steps is right again in front of that Poki place. We've got about a thirty to thirty-five percent change in grade over that furniture zone. So worst case, you would see maybe three steps similar to what we have right there at the Washington Deck. Um, and, yeah, yeah. So then, so the revisions to the plans, if going, uh, left or right, you'd see that we have, um, cafe space, sidewalk space, and the furniture zone with curb and gutter. Then we've got what we have, the, the parking, the two travel lanes, parking again. And then what we're trying to show on the right is actually what one of the steps might look like with a, just, um, I guess where the light pole is, there's a step to get down to the sidewalk. You see where the people are walking. And then you can actually see we've got a cafe rail kind of shown in there. Um, so I guess that, that's just kind of what it might look like now. Any questions on that far?
Hi. I have one. Um, I was wondering, um, I mean, I, I, I really don't like that thermoplastic crosshatching. And, and, you know, I, I kind of wish I'd made more of a stern entreaty back in February of 2019, but I, I just, I'm not understanding the design intention of constructing all of this new curb line, but then putting down thermoplastic crosshatching. What's the purpose of the thermoplastic crosshatching? I mean, I love, I love what you did, increasing a few of those bump outs on the east side of Clayton. Um, I wish we were doing that everywhere. I don't know why we're putting that crosshatching anywhere on this design. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity to reconstruct this sidewalk. And we're leaving sidewalk space on the table here and instead putting thermoplastic on the street. I, I just, I can't wrap my head around that.
Well, there's two, uh, if I might, um, commissioner, um, there's really two, uh, answers to that. The first is, oh, why was the preliminary design drawn that way? And then, uh, why is it implemented this way? So the first part of that is that, um, you know, something that, that is coming, uh, that, that is being picked up in some other major urban areas is, uh, the backend parking. And once you set the curb line, then you're pretty much stuck with that. So what this, the design allowed was if for any reason in the future, future mayor and commissions ever wanted to go to that, uh, you wouldn't have to, to tear up a great deal of, uh, you know, it wouldn't be an expensive switch. It'd just be just restriping. Um, in, so that's the first part. The second, so, uh, that's why you have some leftover real estate on, uh, the street. And Diana and Keith, I don't know if you'll add anything to that.
No, that's, that's exactly how we got where, where we are. And now trying to, to revise some of this, or Diana, I cut you out is, is that what's showing on that other slide with all the red arrows, for example, on this, this uh, location, if you can see the, the mouse moving here is where we're adding the motorcycle parking, uh, taking out some of the thermoplastic, adding the motorcycle, uh, parking back in. And there's a storm drain inlet in that corner. So we can't move that curb line to the west, to the left, uh, top or bottom. Um, on the right to the, that bump out, it, it possibly we could get rid of that thermoplastic as well, uh, in that area. But it really is just filling a space that you don't want to fill with, with the striping there. It keeps, uh, you know, somebody from trying to park, squeeze a vehicle in there or something. Uh, but these other places here on, at the crosswalk, again, we've got the storm drain inlets in these corners. Um, and short of having some awkward, um, shaped concrete that, that juts out into the parking, the striping just kind of fills that void. And, and that's kind of the case working, working the way down the street. You've got the, uh, again, at this intersection, you've got the storm drain inlet that we can't really move the, the curb line without the expense of moving the storm drain.
Can I throw in a question here for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Cause I'm thinking that space, um, you know, I'm, I'm over here on the east side and even more so during COVID times. So I'm not downtown as much. But as you're going through this, um, you, you guys haven't mentioned, um, places to lock bikes. Is that in here somewhere? Because then I was like, oh, those, those thermoplastic places might be good parking, uh, areas that one could use for bike parking. But, um, what, what is, what is the plan on Clayton Street for, uh, parking bikes?
There are bike racks that will be placed throughout the corridor. And they're the bike racks that, um, um, Bike Athens has requested. They're a little bit different than what was in our design and we're just, we're going to put in what Bike Athens has requested.
I, I really like that idea from Commissioner Myers. I mean, instead, you know, could, could we use this space for, for bike racks?
We, we, we don't have that mentioned where those bike racks are going to be, do we, on this?
They're not shown on this drawing, um, but they're, they're spread throughout the furniture zone.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be on the sidewalk. Yeah.
Yes, yes, they are in the furniture zone, uh, throughout the project.
Could we, could we put them in the, in the crosshatching and thus sort of save space on the sidewalk? I like that idea. I would stop being so upset about the crosshatching if we would use that space.
I, the only thing I would worry about, um, and, and I could actually defer to the, the, um, designers who are on the phone, TY Lynn is on the phone. If we have questions would be the likelihood that a bike could get hit by a car pulling in.
Cause they'd be on the same roadbed plane.
Yes.
Well, couldn't you put some, uh, I mean, like, what are those, like those, uh, you know, just those pipes that go up or something in the street? At the bollards right there and like the left side, I'm just looking here as you would be like pulling in, um.
Well, and somebody might trip over a bike while they're trying to walk on the sidewalk.
Right.
So, I mean.
I, I, I'd observe that, you know, while, um, I think in the, in the black and white line drawing that we see in front of us on the screen right now, the crosshatches seem fairly prominent. I, I think as existing on the actual asphalt, that, that, that will seem less of a phenomenon visually. Um, particularly given all of the other things that are in the furniture zone.
Can I bring something up?
Go ahead and listen.
Yeah, um, you know, the planters that we have like on College Square and, you know, Washington Street around the, the deck, um, they're, they've got ri- sharp right angles. And I've actually witnessed folks run into those corners. I've almost done it myself. Um, can we consider kind of rounding those corners a bit or even like, you know, just cutting them so they're more of a, I don't know, an octagon or whatever?
Softer corner.
Yeah.
Little nose.
Yeah. I mean, I've, I've watched, uh, you know, I've, I've watched someone actually trip over. But, you know, I mean, you get gaggles of college kids who aren't paying attention where they're going and made up a few drinks in them. And I've, I've seen folks trip over those corners.
I think for the most part, we certainly can do that, Commissioner Lynn. Um, I think if you look at the revised ones, there are so many less, um, angles there. Most of them are all rounded.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's kind of hard to see on the drawing. I'm, I'm looking on a teeny tiny laptop. So. But yeah, I mean, if we, if, if attention could be paid, so there's as few sharp right angles as possible, especially when people are, you know, rounding corners, um, you know, so there's just as much, even if you can ju- just get a few extra inches out of sidewalk space by cutting off a corner of a planter, um, I think that would be helpful.
Mayor, Mayor, what, what did you think about exploring, putting some bike racks in those crosshatch areas?
I, I, I think that would be confusing both to the cyclists and the motorists. Again, because you're on the asphalt roadbed in, in that situation. Um, I, I just worry about the danger and the conflict possibility there.
So.
Versus having them in the furniture zone.
I like the idea of making sure the scooters and motorcycles are not on the sidewalk level. That could be our demarcation of it. Um, I think we can all picture the amount of scooters and mar- motorcycles that park, um, next to the globe. So I think, um, I'm wondering if more scooter moped spots might be the better, um, use of that space, right? Cause we want them on that, on the road level where once somebody gets off their bike and becomes a pedestrian, they're parking them on the pedestrian so- sidewalk level. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, well, Russell specifically asked about the bike. I, I hadn't given any thought to mopeds. And, uh, obviously you, kind of we heard early in the presentation that, um, that there were more of those spaces. Is that right? Diana, Eric, Keith?
We, we, we added four, two on each side at the mid-block planter. But I don't see if there's any reason why we might not be able to see what else we can do within some of that thermoplastic there to maybe get one more in. I mean, ADDA would love for us to add more mirrors.
Right. And, and, and Commissioner Edwards, um, might that be the better solution?
Either way.
With the scooter, scooter moped. What you're just saying is make it functional, make it relevant for somebody. Um, and so, um.
I, I like that idea too, because you see scooters parked on the sidewalk. Here's another opportunity. We can put them here instead.
Yeah.
And I think like Ms. Jackson mentioned, maybe a, a bollard here or there to signal the drivers, hey, watch out as you're pulling into this spot. That, that makes sense to me too. It provides that sort of refuge for people to pull in their scooter. That, that makes sense to me.
And they're used to using them. I mean, we just showed the one that's out in, um, down on Washington, but there's some in front of the arch. They're all over. If you don't actually think about it till I was out having lunch and I'm like, oh, I'm going to take a picture of that. I gotta take a picture of this. You know, because they're all over the place on Broad and stuff.
Somebody who drives a scooter, I would like to see more scooter parking downtown. It'd be helpful.
Yeah. I think we're going to see more and more scooters.
Keith, do you want to back up to the, uh, planter one that we skipped over? So again, um, the original design, as, as Keith said, and I'm not going to reread it to you, had a, a lot more planters. And so now we're working with central services to come up with, they've got a hybrid approach. They would use the contractors for their growing season. Um, they would use, um, a mix of native evergreens and perennials accented with annuals as needed. And the, they use in-house staff to care for it during the dormant season. And so their budget is basically about half of what it would be. And they won't, and the reason why it's not less is because they're having to use, um, because they're not hiring a person. They have to use contractors and then there's a premium, Andrew says, to use a, to use a contractor. So again, it's about half that. So, and then again, it, don't think that that planter is 24 inches high. It's really just a curb within, um, the railing. Okay. So would that, that box that we use down there kind of would look like a big planter, but it's not going to be that high.
Oop, my bad.
Um.
Will it be something you could sit on?
Well, not necessarily. I don't think, well, you can. There's a little bit of a space there.
I mean, I sometimes see people sitting on the ones in Col- on College Square. Are they going to be in similar dimension?
No, the, the current design on the, on the drawings that we have are the, the walls are narrower and the railing is actually on top of the wall. Is the, is the current design. But the walls are really only intended to be about six inches above the sidewalk.
It's really just a curb to keep all the, the material inside there instead of washing if there's a little bit of a slope.
Okay. It's like a raised bed kind of.
Yes, sir. Very much so.
Where before we were trying to make the water go into it for infiltration, we really want to keep the water out of it, uh, because of the problems that might occur with the, the properties downtown.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. And again, if you, if you want to look at this a little bit closer, the gray we're getting rid of on the thermoplastic. So you can see how the curb lines are changing and then the grayed out. Um, it's a little more evident if you go to like the next slide or two, Keith, where you can see on the, on the east side on, um, I think that's Jackson Street, where we basically got rid of all of the thermoplastic. Same thing on the east side of Wall Street. And the same thing on, in front of the sushi poky place. All, all of those arrows are pointing. We were able to just basically eliminate all that thermoplastic. Okay. Any questions on that? Then I will move into, um, the storm thing. So as Keith stated before, that original design was, uh, we're going to use some of the planters for water quality treatment and for the wash down water and everything. But now this updated design actually treats, so, and that original treatment area was going to be 3.31 acres. So it's that grayed out section of East Clayton and part of College Avenue. But now with this new kind of centralized design, we're basically going to treat 22 acres, almost seven times, um, area at a centralized treatment plant located down at the Firefly Trailhead. Say that fast a couple of times. Um, so if you would go to the next slide, Keith, we've got two different options we're looking at. We would intercept that flow from the 22 acres at a manhole that Keith, if you could circle that manhole so they can see it. And we would send the flow basically, I don't know what that is, if that's down. I don't say, know if it's south or whatever, to a vortex separator. And that vortex separator basically separates out and traps grit and debris and sediment and hydrocarbons from that stormwater runoff. And then that flow would then be sent back into the detention systems. We've got three boxes there, six by six boxes. Um, and that would be basically what we would do. Now, there's an, there's a kind of an expanded treatment option. If you go to the next one, Keith, we would have the same two manhole intercepting the flow and a vortex separator. And then we would add, um, storm drain filters. And those basically, um, those, they're, they're media filled cartridges that are in a box. Okay. And those basically, um, those they're they're media filled cartridges that are in a box, okay? And they trap particulates and absorb pollutants like um, from that stormwater runoff. This media can be designed for various pollutants. We can. Address specific ones. We can look at total suspended solids, phosphorus, heavy metals, hydrocarbons. Um, and the maintenance for that would be um, removing the cartridges and replacing them with media. Uh, recharge media, and then I didn't tell you that maintenance for that vortex separator would just be using a tractor truck. To suck um, what gets trapped in that uh, vortex separator. So. We're looking at those right now. Um, if you go to the next slide. There's the, there's the costs associated with them. We worked with uh, Transportation of Public Works Stormwater folks. To come up with, I guess, a stimulus. Option that um, the mayor or the manager had been asking for. And if we go to the. The, I guess, the expanded treatment option. We're hopefully gonna get some money from the stimulus team to help uh, pay for that. Um. But yeah, that's that's how we would handle the stormwater there. Um, the next slide. Um, so since you guys approved the design concept, there's been a fire code change, yay? Um, and that fire code change um. Will preclude us from doing the cross streets. Um, crossing Clayton zigzag like we were hoping to be able to do. Um, because that becomes an entanglement issue with the fire department and their apparatus, um. Major concerns with them, and it's not allowed by code anymore. So. The the silver lining with that is because we did incorporate low voltage lighting. Um, the fire department is going to concede that we may still utilize the festoon lighting. But that festoon lighting would be parallel to the curb going pole to pole. Kind of as, this is kind of the best I could find online is what that example would look like. Um, I've confirmed with our lighting designers and the factory, because these poles are already in production. That the design can accommodate this. Um, with little to little financial changes to that. We have um, the the lights will be two foot on center. So we'll still have some fest- festivity there, and then because it is low voltage lighting. I think it was either the lighting vendor or Central Services says, once the trees grow. We can hang those lights into the trees, too. Add lights or whatever. Yes, Commissioner? Right?
Um, thank you. This is one of my favorite parts of downtown that I was so happy that you guys were. Um, visualizing a way for us to have the. Fun festive lighting while the trees matured. To where they can handle it, um, and I really appreciate the investigation and learning that. The 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 light points, instead of going across. Can just loop. Parallel to, I mean, that's just the the best answer. Uh, when I saw that. Detail in the um. Update that we had. All kinds of questions were going through my mind, and I'm sure they were you, too, and so. You're saying that this is what we had ordered and they've confirmed attaching them line parallel.
Right, is, yeah. The eye bolts will change, um, and the. Yes, we should do all of that. We're going to keep them at the. I think it's twenty-five foot tall lights, um. PDA can still hang banners from them, you know? So even pedestrian lights are going to have. You can see here, this is a combination one where we have the streetlights and the ped light. But that is still going to be twenty-five foot tall with a ped light coming out at fifteen feet, fourteen feet. Um, but we'll still have it go all the way up so we can hang the lights between them, and then A D D A can hang their banners, too.
Gotcha. I have one more question. I don't want to dwell too much on the past, but if we had been able to finish this with the first bid that we got that wasn't over budget. And we had gone across, would it have been grandfathered in with this change that happened in February?
I have no idea.
Okay, all right, it's it's it doesn't matter.
But, you know, one thing, I don't think that first design had the festoon lighting in it. We hadn't come up with that part of the the, I don't think that was in the construction documents at that point, was it? Commissioner, I don't recall it being there.
I I, but it's it, that was, that was, that was so long ago. So many, that was a pandemic ago. I can't remember. Anyway, well, thanks for that information. It doesn't matter. The main thing is, I think the solution is good, and then knowing we can grow out from there. When the trees can handle. Their 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 part on it. Thank you.
I had just a quick thing to mention, um. Uh, about the back end parking for Manager Williams and and my colleagues, I. I'm I'm a, I I I'm not sold on Clayton Street for back end parking, because if you go Pulaski to Lumpkin, we already have the curb line for diagonal in. But I am open to back end parking on Broad Street downtown, because I see folks try to pull out. On Broad and and that that is a a big hazard, because the traffic definitely drives a lot faster on Broad, so. I don't know, may, we'll talk more about that, Manager Williams. If you want.
Yes, of course. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
All right, so um, just wanted to give you an update on the tentative project schedule. Um, the the good thing is, is if you vote to, I guess, eliminate um, that mid-block crossing. The flat work should move a lot faster because there's a lot. Lot less formwork to be done. Um, so I think that while this is not exactly, because we're in April and we're not probably all the way down there, we're not all the way finished with March, but. You, as you guys know, they they poured the other day. They're pouring tomorrow morning at four A M. So, we want to keep moving along. So. So our next steps um, is for your consideration of these revised plans. I continue to coordinate with the artist. Um, I will meet with um, the contractor and the designer. And and anybody else who wants to meet to review these changes. And then we'll get some pricing and schedule revisions for them. For these.
Thanks, Diana and Keith. Any uh, any final questions?
Uh, I I have a question since we're here, and I don't think it's. It's totally relevant to everything here, but uh, there've been enough people who've asked it. Uh, can you tell me? What the tree, what trees are going to be planted in there? And if they will be chosen for, like, what's the lifespan? Um, I've had a couple of people reach out to me about that.
Um, so Keith, if you go back, I think we list on one of those. Things. The the actual, the landscape ones.
And if it's all right, maybe I'll uh, I'll jump in and take this one.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
So you can see the species that are selected there uh, in the bottom left-hand corner. We've continued the design theme to try to focus oaks and specifically laurel oaks on the corners, because that is where we get our mileage with Christmas lighting. Uh, in between, it's a mix of maple, uh, um, ginkgo, hawthorn, grape myrtles, and so on. Uh, the design, so the average life of an urban tree, just fun fact, seven years. Uh, out of this, we would expect twenty-five to fifty years, depending on. Uh, a variety of conditions. And uh, we are specifically engineering soils beneath. The concrete in which to support these trees, which is consistent with what we did on Broad Street and on West Clayton. Uh, so the last thing that I would offer, even though it wasn't entirely asked, is one common theme is um. Are these trees native? And the answer is yes and no. So some of them are native and some of them are not, and so while we have a preference for native trees, I think we need to acknowledge that Clayton Street is anything but a native environment. We have tremendous heat loading and bad soils and drainage, and so we've really tried to focus on trees that can thrive in that environment.
Um, An- Andrew, could you just say what you said before about what are we doing? We're engineering the soil underneath the.
Yes, ma'am. We're using something called uh, structural soil, and it's a patented product from Cornell University. It's a mix of stone and soil and a binder. And what it allows is for us to create a stable matrix in which you can put concrete uh, in the furniture zone. Um, but also still has the mineral soil in an uncompacted state in those voids, and so it creates a rooting corridor. Where you can get more expansive root systems, but also less damage to your hardscape.
And and is that something, are these like, is this new? We did not do this last. Round?
No, we we have done it uh, mu- many places downtown. Uh, we we did it on West Clayton, all of Broad Street, some of Foundry. Um, each time we've done it, we've learned a little bit, so we kind of tweak our our design each time. Uh, and and we are finding that the trees are healthier with less uh, hardscape interaction than what you saw, let's say, on East Clayton before or on portions of Washington.
Thank you.
I have one quick question, if I could, please. Um. So uh, I know some of us have 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 heard from some individuals, uh, some shops that were, it just basically want to make sure that there's. Ample loading zone area for uh, the businesses around College Square. And I was wondering, since we've. We're moving forward with that project. The uh, the the south end of where College that ends in the Clayton. I mean, is it, are we considering having that? Could that be a possible loading zone? Uh, that little pull in there? I wa- I was sitting out in College Square the other day. And and we we they are using it as a loading zone for construction equipment that for the Clayton Street project. And I'm wondering if that's something that could be considered while we're going through and doing the road repaving, if that could be created as a loading zone also.
Uh, Steve, would you want to take that one? I I guess I. I think if Steve Decker's still on, uh. You know, one problem with making that a loading zone would be a truck that got left there while they were unloading would be blocking that drive lane if we had an emergency. Uh, that might come through. If 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 it's this area. The kind of dead space right now, I think FedEx. Uses it a lot during lunchtime. I see uh, park there and UPS and and others, but.
But couldn't they come up from Broad? Keith? Couldn't the emergency vehicle come on Broad? Because, you know, right now we've got the concrete planters blocking that lane. There's no traffic going through there.
That's true.
Is, uh, to me, it seems like right now that's that space isn't, nothing's utilizing it. It's pretty a large space. That seems like you said, already just naturally, people are using it as a loading zone. And I thought that might be able to uh, just uh. Be a way for us to to recognize some of those concerns and find a solution. Something for us to think about move forward. I'm just wa- I'm just hoping that's being explored.
I I agree with Commissioner Denson. I I see trucks loading there already. It seems like a pretty good spot. And since we have. Emergency vehicle access coming from Broad. You know, we. I I mean, I want to open up a can of worms, too, but talking about the curb lines there.
Where, if y'all don't mind, where exactly are you talking about the the this potential loading zone?
The north end of College Square, where College intersects Clayton.
In that place between the two bump outs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I witnessed a very large semi truck back out there and pick up. Uh, some of the construction equipment and stuff, just showing it was, it was. It 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 can, it can, uh, I mean, probably. For example, like the alcohol delivery truck, they can probably fit two there at one time. It just seems like, kind of like Commissioner Edwards said, it's already being utilized that way. Um. And so it might just be good for us to, if we can work with public safety, find a way that. We can ensure there's access to Broad, and maybe we can just go ahead and make that a permanent loading spot.
Well. That can be formalized. If we can talk to Steve and and of course, um, you know, your decision on closing College Square is forthcoming. Uh, and 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 then I think there's been some indication of having. Uh. You know, residents or business folks or staff look at. If if you take that step. And then permanently close it, you know, uh, some potential rework of that entire area. Uh, as a potential T S P L O S project. So there's more time to come. Uh, and I would also just remind everybody, uh, because we get questions from time to time. Uh, that particular intersection there would also be where the creative crosswalk would go. Uh, at the end of the uh, once we get the paving done as well. Uh, so there's several things going on there. We hear you. Let me talk to uh. Steve Decker and others, and maybe we can pick that loading zone question up. Uh, now, Commissioner Edwards did mention changing curb lines, so. Uh, that would be something that we might want to hear a little bit more about sooner rather than later. But Diane, I might offer on that.
Well, I was thinking, you know. If if we're. Um. Yeah, we're moving ahead. I mean, you know. I. Uh, I'm I'm a little confused at the moment, because it was my understanding we voted to permanently close College Square in our last meeting through a C D O.
I apologize. I I was, I was out of the office, and so I'm catching up with that.
Yeah, um, so uh, uh, got got some news for you, man. We're closing College Square.
Thank you for catching me up on that, sir.
Um, and so with that done, um, thinking about that curb line. And how we might want to orient that curb line. And possibly incorporate a loading zone there. And then, of course, there was talk about the next T S P L O S to really finish it out and make it a a more beautiful place. But since we're pouring all these new curbs right now, what sort of opportunity might we seize right now?
Well, I I personally, you know, in talking with the contractor, Commissioner Edwards, and, you know. I think it would cost us less to, once you close, I mean, I know you voted to close it, but once we do a college. Uh, square design. It would cost less to come back and and revise some curb lines than it is to gonna. Tell the contractor to stop and wait while we do a re- a redesign of of that intersection, because. We still have to get curb through there, uh, so the revision's not going to be. Uh, in the end, we can't completely curb that off. We've got to get, stormwater has to get through that intersection. You're still going to need to be able to get trucks to make that turn. To get in there for deliveries at times. I think you're. In other places where you have these squares, I think ultimately, uh, you're going to want to have some vehicle access through the square, even though it's a pedestrian plaza, you want to, going to want to be able to have that.
Service.
For both ends. Yeah, so. Yeah. I I believe it would be more co- cost effective to wait and do any curb line revisions once you do the square design versus putting the contractor on hold.
Yeah.
Waiting on a revision now.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's it's not a big cost later to change that curb line.
Okay. That sounds good.
All right.
One quick thought I wanted to share, and I super appreciate y'all. This is great. Um, I know this has been. A kibillion details and a lot of people with a lot of passionate ideas, so thanks for being back here again with another redesign. I'm excited for it. Uh, a thought I had from my colleagues was maybe we could use. Some of the thermoplastic striping area. To get some electric charging stations for some leaf blowers, some electric leaf blowers, maybe, for people to hang up. When they're getting together for some downtown events. So not saying we need to commit to that right now, but if some of my colleagues want to kick that around, maybe we can pull it out in a C D O later. Commissioner Edwards, maybe, if you want to meet up with me for that.
Solar powered leaf blowers.
You're you're teeing it up for me there, Commissioner. Yeah, we'll we'll catch up on that for sure.
Maybe an overhead leaf blower rack even. Festoon leaf blower display.
Or a broom, you know, I don't know. We'll figure it out. Yeah.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Diana, thanks a bunch.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, from concrete to water. Well, thank you, Mayor, and uh, the final presentation for tonight, I did keep in contact with last week. Uh, you'll be glad to know. Um. And I think I'm up to speed on that, and this is the, well, I, let me say this before we leave that last item. Uh, a little bit unusual, but the agenda item accompanying. The revision of the preliminary plans for Clayton Street, which we just discussed. Will be coming to you for consideration at a special call session next Tuesday. April the twentieth. And that is necessary for us to keep on track. Keep that contractor moving. Uh, I I I, we had some good, good feedback, you know, if you've got some additional feedback or concerns, please let the mayor or myself know. Uh, but right now, that's the current trajectory we're on. Uh, the S P L O S twenty twenty Water Trails Project, uh, that was, uh, this is in response to a a grant opportunity and a a a planned project for. Uh, a takeout uh, for uh, canoe kayak access. Uh, and uh, that that timeline has has changed a little bit. This is in the, this. This is in the, this is no longer, you're no longer being asked to approve this out of cycle, but this is coming through for the May voting meeting. And Melinda Davis is with us, our Assistant Leisure Services Director, to walk you through that opportunity.
Thank you, Blaine. Good evening, everyone. Wait just a moment, I'll cue this up. Okay, I'm hoping everyone can see that. So tonight I'm going to talk to you about kind of the next phases and the project concept for the Macon Highway Launch. So this is a SPOS 2020 project. This is for the project concept that we're presenting tonight, and that's what you're going to have on the agenda item for potential approval is project concept for the Macon Highway Launch Project. Now I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the project history, give you a summary of what's going on as far as the project to date, and then talk about our grant opportunity over the project concept, discuss our public input results, talk about the budget, the next steps, and then have our Q and A on the presentation. Just a little history, you guys have seen this project before, but it did start back in 2014 with a resolution for water trails, which then led to the construction of the Ben Burton River Access, which was funded through the Riverview Program, Review Grant Program. And then in 2016, we completed that Burton access point, but there's no public takeout available. So when paddlers get in at Ben Burton, they need a safe way to get off the river. Currently, they're having what I would call a choose your own adventure experience to find their way off the river. In 2017, the updated Greenway Network Plan was approved, and that included water trails on both the North and Middle Oconee Rivers. We explored opportunities for takeout sites on the Middle Oconee, because as I stated previously, Ben Burton, there's a put in, but there's no way to take out. So we were looking at different opportunities, different sites. Macon Highway turned out to be the site, the best site for us and what we were looking for with the goals of the project and being able to have a safe place for people to take out of the river. So then in November of 2019, the SPOS 2020 referendum was approved, and that included project number 34, which is water trails. Back in October, you did authorize us to pursue a grant opportunity with the Land and Water Conservation Fund, LWCF, and that's through the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. And we did submit that application for that Tier One pre-approval process because it's a two-tier grant process. You have to apply in Tier One. If you're approved, then you get to really turn in the grant application for Tier Two. And in February, we learned that the Macon Highway Launch Project was approved in that Tier One pre-application bedding and that we were allowed to move to Tier Two. We had a workshop with the Georgia DNR in March, and that was to talk about some of the detailed projects or detailed information about the project and what we would need for deliverables for the Tier Two grant application. And moving forward with that, we moved into what would be considered that project conception stage. And part of that too is having public input. So on March 25th and 27th, we held in-person input and then had a virtual option on March 29th. With the in-person and the virtual input, we had a total of 26 people attend. And then we had an online survey available from March 21st to April 4th. We reopened the survey on April 5th and 6th because we had a one-minute time mistake that lost us a whole day, but we fixed it. So we reopened that survey and we ended up with a total of 278 comments received. A full report of the public input survey, including all comments, is attached with the agenda item. So let's talk about the summary of this project. And again, this project is the Macon Highway Launch. It does provide that public takeout spot. It complements the launch at Ben Burton Park. It's been in conceptual development for a while, and we've been waiting on an opportunity for funding to move forward. So that's what you're seeing in this presentation and in the agenda item. This is our highest priority due to the critical completion of the Middle Oconee River Water Trail. The project is very simple. It consists of a parking area, a walkway to the river, and then the launch and takeout that provides access for canoes and kayaks and other non-motorized vessels. This isn't a traditional boat launch like you would think of on a lake, and it's not something that you would back your car down to. You would be walking your boat down. And with that, like any site, we would have amenities, maybe a bench or two, trash cans, recycling, that sort of thing, just to make sure that we've got something that is nice for the public to use. So with this grant opportunity, we do have full funding through the SPOS 2020 program. What we're trying to do is stretch those SPOS dollars further and funding 50% of this project through the LWCF grant. So that would provide us that much more money into the SPOS program for the other launches that we're looking at for the future. This deadline for the grant application is April 30th. We are on target and working toward meeting that deadline. As part of this grant application process, we did want to give a nod to the cultural resource in the area, Princeton Mill. But we've gotten a lot of input from concerned citizens, and thanks to Commissioner Guidance, we have changed the name to the Macon Highway Launch. So that, we will have the working grant name of Princeton Mill with the DNR because that's how it was submitted to them. But if this is funded and you guys approve the project concept and we move forward, it will be the Macon Highway Launch signage, everything like that. So the name has changed. So let's look at the concept rendering. This is a rendering staff completed just to help understand the concept of what's there. What you can see right now in the concept is a parking lot and then the walkway, and then further down will be the access to the river. Again, this is a concept, so it's kind of a high level of, these are the things we know we want to have there. These are the elements we want to have. And so this is what we put out, this configuration to the public for input. Here's kind of an overall bird's eye view rendering. This is what's been shared at public input. You can see the parking area, walk, we have the walk down to the river here. There are bollards that are blocking vehicles from being able to drive down there. And then the concept of what a launch would look like. This is the engineer's kind of version of looking at this and just making sure that conceptually it works so that this is something that is workable for the site and in concept, it will work. So what are some of the access examples? Again, the next step of this project would be preliminary plans, where we really get into further design of the details of the project. So we have the existing launch style at Ben Burton. Here's a launch at the Shetega River. Here's one at East Ridge. Here's the Toccoa River Launch. So there's a lot of varieties out there. We're planning to work with engineers to make sure that we get the best launch that's going to work with hydrology of the river and what's happening there as far as currents go. Now, what do we hear with public inputs, results? We have received feedback from residents in the nearby Princeton Mill neighborhood. Following concerns have been identified, the project to name, a lot of concerns about safety and traffic impacts, the site design itself, the idea of possible restrooms, and then trash and littering. We've done everything we can to address and what we hope in the next steps of this process, we can really refine further and address a lot of these concerns. We have changed the site name. As I said earlier, the grant application is going to reflect the old name until that grant process is finished. We have room to be able to install cameras, an excluder arm or gate at the entrance to the parking lot that could close at sunset to prevent any nighttime activities in that parking area, possibility of lighting. We're also wanting to get some guidance from traffic engineers to address any traffic concerns that might be identified. There was some confusion with an earlier concept where we had removed the slip lane as a part of a drawing where we were exploring the site. That is no longer in play. What we are looking at is simply the launch site. We are asking engineers to weigh in as far as what needs to happen with any traffic analysis, any changes to the traffic flow for Macon Highway for this site. We've also looked at increased flexibility in the parking design to provide better access for canoe and kayak trailers. People, you know, we've heard that there's this desire to have like an SUV with a trailer so a family could get their boats on the river. So you can redesign the parking configuration so that it does allow for those types of vehicles. And then restrooms were a future consideration that's based on use levels and potential funding opportunities. Those are not part of this project concept. But they are something, again, if there was a demand used in the future, we might explore the possibility of putting restrooms in. And then trash and recycling containers will be provided and serviced by staff. On the other side of public input, the paddling community did indicate support of the project. We had a high number of supportive comments, but there are some further design and paddler safety considerations they wanted us to take into account in the next stages of the design. We get a larger parking area accommodating vehicles with trailers or having some sort of turnaround, a safe launch design that works with hydrology, make it easy, easier to access in a shorter distance to water. That one's not really feasible with the site. You're going to have to carry your boat down. And then the environmental impacts of putting that much concrete and everything in that area and looking at the floodplain. So staff, we can address many of these concerns. Again, parking design for vehicles with trailers, the engineered launch design as part of the preliminary plan development, reducing barriers in the launch design, and then providing, again, the trash recycling and even efficient lime recycling receptacle provided there at the river at the access so that we don't have an issue with littering. Here's our project budget slide. You can see we have $750,000 in the overall SPOS 2020 Water Trails Project. We're looking at matching LWCF grant for the project. We're looking at 50% match being $232,000. So total available revenue for this project is $982,000. So you can see we've got what's designated for the design, public art, miscellaneous testing fees, and then what we've got set aside for future subprojects and contingencies. And so with these amounts already calculated, the total, we're looking at $449,000 as the total available for some project one. And again, the funding source is SPOS 2020 LWCF grant funds. This project is the first priority of staff in the Water Trail Committee, and this grant provides the opportunity to apply for up to $232,000 for the balance of future projects. As far as our next steps are concerned, April 19th, 2020, project concept will go before the submission for the Tier Two LWCF grant is April 30th. We are on target to meet that deadline. We're looking at the agenda item in this April-May cycle, so you'll see the agenda item for a May vote. And then in fall 2021, if the grant was awarded and you approved the project concept, we'd move forward with preliminary plans. And that would include more public input, including public input on our environmental assessment, public input on the preliminary plans. And then for the public input, just like in this stage, we had our standard meetings. But I will say we went ahead and had an additional public input session for this one at the Princeton Mill neighborhood. And we'll be prepared to do that again as many times as needed to work through this design for the preliminary design. And then the presentation of preliminary plans for mayor and commission with approval would happen sometime in 2022. And one thing I would like to say, I've gotten a few comments recently talking about how this is a part of the Greenway Network Plan and how all of this fits together. We do say in the grant that this site could be a hub for trails, multi-use trails, water trails, talking about the idea of parallel mountain biking trails along the Greenway. All of that, all of those are future things. The Greenway Network Plan is a future-driven document. That's a multi, multi-year, multi-decade document. This is a piece of the Greenway Network Plan that is only about this water trail launch, and it is the only piece in this area that has funding. So I just want to clear that up because there did seem to be a little confusion out there about how all of the rest of the Greenway Network and that plan in a longer sense of time would fold together. So with that, I'm open for questions.
Thanks, Mel. Input from anybody?
I've got a comment or two. Yeah, I'm very excited about this, this project. I think it's long overdue for folks to be able to get out on our river, get in and out of it. So I'm super excited about it. And you know, I know that it's been under discussion for at least a couple of years. I've sat in on several meetings where this has been discussed. So it's certainly well thought out. I'm just looking at the budget, and I know this might seem a little frivolous, but this $2,000 for the public art, I'm just concerned that that's not really going to get much. You know, when you're talking about public art, you're talking about stuff that needs to be made from very durable materials, which are expensive, and the $2,000 is, you know, barely adequate compensation for an artist. Is there any way in these kind of lower cost projects, is there any way for us to beef up that public art budget for these? I mean, I know when we have, you know, multimillion dollar projects, you can, that 1% goes further. But does anybody have any input on that?
We, we've got a sort of, of course, our SPOS standing policy, the kind of proportionate spending for public art. And so that, that's, that seems to have driven this budget. Now, what staff has done sometimes is in linear projects, you know, the Greenway and Firefly being a good example, sort of clustering the public art. And I don't know, Mel, if that's something that, you know, you've, you've thought about for having a piece of public art to encompass all the water trail activities, or if you have any perspective on that?
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up because I had a very interesting and exciting meeting with ACAC last night to discuss this project and the $2,000 budget, understanding that this is a small budget for art. And one of the things that we have is a site fixture, and I think everyone was intrigued by, was the idea of taking the fishing recycling station and making it something attractive and eye-catching to help not only increase utilization, but turn it into a piece of art at the river. And that's something, if we could get it on this section, we could then mimic and duplicate that throughout the different water trail sites. So creating something with a lower budget, but that also meets a big environmental need and also provides something neat, kind of branding for the water trails, especially here in Athens. So that was one idea we discussed as part of this lower budget proposal last night.
Don't, doesn't the commission have the discretion to go above the 1% budget for our public art? Wasn't it at least 1% in the language?
Yeah, I mean, certainly we can allocate funds as appropriate through any SPOS activity.
I mean, I'd like to have some kind of discussion with the Cultural Affairs Commission about their thoughts on even being able to recruit an appropriate artist for a project like this with such a low budget.
Mel, I do like the functional art idea. That's great.
Yeah, I'm excited about that, too.
Patrick?
Yes. So I'm dripping out there a couple of times too. So this question is, was Cochran, so the concept design, and hopefully I said this right, so the concept design fits in with the budget and the 50% grant, but you also had mentioned some future, some, you also had mentioned like some extra amenities. Are there extra amenities included, or is that something that is later down the road? Or did I miss something?
What we have in the budget, the way we've divided it out, is we're looking at what the grant will fund and then what the grant will not fund. And we went ahead with our cost estimate and boosted that a bit based on what we heard from public input to include the ability to expand the parking for the, or, you know, reconfigure the parking. And that's something, an additional fencing, which is also something that could go as part of the grant. The other amenities I mentioned, the excluder arm, the cameras, those were budgeted and extra outside of what would be the grant match. Does that make sense?
Okay, that makes sense. And just for buffer zone with, I know there's a road sign, but adding more trees, would you think that helped with, you know, some of the concerns of the Princeton Mill community?
Not sure if trees would address the concerns. We are in GDOT right-of-way for most of the launch, so we would need to get their approval before adding trees. You can see the clump down toward the bottom down by the river is an existing group of trees. But I'm not sure with the billboard and then with GDOT right-of-way, what they will require. We did have some trees added at the parking area.
Of shrubbery or anything, you know? And isn't there, because I don't know this area, but isn't there across the street an area that's already existing where college students go and drink and party? That's been in place for decades or years?
That's down Macon Highway, about a mile.
Okay.
Yeah, on another waterway.
Thank you.
I got a couple of things briefly. So I love trees. I'm with Patrick that if there's a way to add more trees, I'd love to join Commissioner Davenport in that advocacy insofar as it's possible. And I'm sorry if I missed this because I had to step away very briefly in the presentation, but what's the story with the billboard? Is that guaranteed? but what's the story with the billboard? Is that guaranteed to stay no matter what, or?
If you look at the drawing, you can see the rectangle around it. That is actually the property line for the company that owns the billboard, so that is their billboard and their property. We have talked with them and we have an agreement to provide them with the access through here to get to their board to service it. So as far as providing a gate and everything like that, if we have any fencing, we've talked about that and the possibility of that moving forward. So that billboard is indeed there and will be there.
You'll find, Commissioner, that in state law, billboards are the most important feature in the entire state of Georgia. So just
Yeah, one of the many ways
Make sure you know that right now and keep that top of mind.
I'm banking it. We're not in Vermont here. And then I guess my last question was, in terms of like the environmental impact and putting a parking lot in, how much sense would it make to do gravel or some kind of dirt parking, at least in the spaces that aren't the handicap accessible parts?
It's wonderful in concept, but in use and over time, especially if it rains anything at all, it just ends up really wearing away. And that, the College Avenue parking lot is a great example where we had a gravel lot to begin with, but we ended up paving it just because the in and out and the wear and tear on that was creating some big potholes and some pretty significant issues on the entry and exit.
If I could, Mel, add to that. So it's a maintenance issue, as Mel pointed out. The last time we went through some stormwater discussions, I was surprised to learn that over time, as gravel becomes more compact, you don't really get that much of an increase of infiltration. That was something I learned. I'll find out a little bit more about that and share that information with you.
I'm always getting my mind blown every month learning new things. Thanks, y'all.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question, Kelly.
Yeah.
All right. Mel, could you point out where, I mean, we've had these correspondents from the Princeton Mill people, but we even see their property on this slide that we're looking at right now? Hello?
Mel, I think you're muted.
I'm so sorry. If you look at the top left, you can see a property line there. That is a Princeton Mill neighborhood property owner.
And what is all the green? I mean, are those all, is that tree growth?
That is tree growth. In this area, there's actually, it looks to be an ephemeral stream, but there's a pretty deep gully through this tree area, which is probably why it still has trees in it. And then as you go further north, it kind of opens up into what looks like a wetland area. So you can't really traverse this way without being the gully or that kind of wet area.
All right, that's good. But anyway, I'm thrilled to see this here. You know, I think this is going to be a really big, wonderful trough for paddlers coming from other places. This, I think I talked to someone the other day who said that this could be, depending on the wet, you know, the water height, you know, two to four hour, like paddling trip from Ben Burton. And so that's a really exciting to have, to have an official place to come out where there's parking and so forth. So I'm really supportive of this and look forward to what you could do with the remaining funds. So thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Allison?
Oh, thank you. This is so, so exciting. Mel, we've been through so many options with this to get the second point on the Middle Oconee to make it an official river trail. And I'm wondering if in, without divulging too many details that aren't relevant about what didn't work out, if there could be a summary. I know that there's neighbors in this area who have, are just now getting in the loop, right, of this location? If there was a summary slide that we could have when we talk to let them know the different places we did investigate? No, I mean, think of us sitting there at those places and balancing out and realizing that the visibility of this one actually provides the most security of the other options, things like that. The whole overgrown kudzu lot that's right here is going to get really transformed and be an improved repair and buffer, even with the river access. I do want to, and also I applaud changing it to Macon Highway, and I understand your grant name is already set, but can we also make sure it's river access? Because I think that people don't realize the number of people that not, are not doing renegade river access, but they do have legitimate properties that they can, so some people use the Ben Burton River Access as their exit point, right? Some people from a legitimate place upriver. And then this one, obviously, we're looking to make it to be combined with Ben Burton to make a river trail that can be in the networks and promoted through the state, which makes it advertised and a great asset. But there will be, so anyway, if we could just refer to it as river access, I think it's more applicable because there will be people who put their vessel here and then have something downstream, down river that we're not aware of. I think that that's important. And then can you clarify that from our August 11 work session on this topic, that the Macon Highway vehicle traffic, that part has changed? But the actual site for, that you have on the screen right now is the same. Is that accurate?
That is correct. So this is the only thing that's in consideration with this project concept with us moving forward. Any changes to traffic would come from engineers, you know, traffic folks looking at that in the next phases of the design. This is just about a launch project. And you did remind me, that is one thing I wanted to bring up. There's been some concerns about traffic impacts on South Lumpkin. I think those will be pretty minimal because the paddlers have indicated, and I checked it on Google Maps, the best route to shuttle between Ben Burton and this spot is taking Timothy Road from Macon Highway, and it goes all the way up and across and turns to Mitchell Bridge. So I hope that that will also alleviate some of the concerns about traffic because when you think about ways to get your boat back or get your vehicle back to Ben Burton, that's probably, well, that's not probably, that is the most efficient and Google Maps agrees.
Right, exactly. And that's another bonus to the name change, being more aligned to Macon Highway. And so that's all good, and I agree with those strategies as well. And so we, we as commissioners should not be sharing our August 11 work session presentation. If, when people are asking for details, this is the one we want to give them because that's kind of misleading with the vehicle stuff on there. Is that right, Mel? Okay. And then as far as the public art, I do want to give a thumbs up for it being functional art, whether it's benches or Adirondack chairs or the type of functional art that could be around this area, signage and things that are conducive to this activity. And I'm very excited. I'm glad you guys made it through that first round of the grant and happy to have more information to share with those citizens that we're trying to get up to speed on this. Thank you.
I wanted to echo my Commissioner Wright, who mentioned about staff getting us some more information about their efforts over the past couple of years to bird dog other sites for this takeout. I have heard feedback from folks in this area who are hoping for something a little more optimal in terms of size and access. This is a pretty small site. It would be nice if we could find something larger. But I know staff's done a lot of work, and so we're looking forward, I spoke to Manager Williams about that, and also another parcel in particular. So, you know, working on communicating to the residents about our efforts to identify the optimal site for this, you know, recognizing that maintaining just one river access is untenable because, as Mel said, you know, it's a choose-your-own-adventure. We got folks pulling out of the river all up and down this corridor, who knows where. I get complaints all the time from residents upset about boating trespassers, dragging boats across their side yards, whatever. So, you know, I think we all agree, we've got to have a site somewhere to provide that takeout access. We can't just send citizens down the river and trust them just to get out wherever they can. That's not working. I am excited about the water trail because this is such a beautiful stretch of river with, wow, it really is a great place for wildlife viewing. So great work, staff, and I look forward to hearing more from you about the parcel search because we have had offers from residents in Princeton Mill to help negotiate for the purchase of other parcels that might work out, some longstanding Athenians who've made overtures that they can help. But I lost my train of thought. Sorry. Yeah. So I look forward to hearing that from, hearing back from staff about that and moving forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Russell. I'll, go ahead. Yes, go right ahead.
This question is directed to Commissioner Edwards. Maybe for some of us who are not even familiar with water trails, this definitely has not been in my culture. Maybe you can arrange for us to take an exploratory ride from Ben Burton down the river so we can see firsthand what we are going to be boating on.
Okay, but once that invitation is issued, it cannot be denied, Commissioner.
Just make sure I have on a vest, what you call a vest. Okay, I'm good.
I got one for you. All right, that's a great idea.
I'll go with you. I'm all in.
You'll be amazed, Ovita. I mean, you'll be hard pressed to even believe you're in Athens on some stretches of the Middle Oconee there. You just feel like you're a million miles away. It's wonderful. And I'll admit to being one of those people who has carved an impromptu pig path through some properties not intended for that purpose. So I'm definitely looking forward to a focused opportunity to get out at a designated spot rather than the undesignated random spots I have chosen in years past. All right, anybody else? All right, everybody. Hope you find something tasty to eat this evening if you've not done so already. And please be safe out there. Mel, Kent, everybody else. Good to see you.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thanks, y'all.
Y'all.